Deacon of everybody, we will call the meeting to order and I'll invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on our agenda tonight is approval of that agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. President, move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Lynn.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask something or make a comment?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to accept the agenda. I make a motion to amend the motion to remove any discussion of policy 2300 from the agenda. Well, policy 2300 is not specifically listed as an agenda item to be discussed. It was added to the agenda, item 10, this morning at 11:36 per an email from the superintendent. It was not provided to us 24 hours prior to this meeting, which is required by Wisconsin statute 19.84 subsection 3. It's my understanding that this board's position is that supporting documents for agenda items do not need to be provided to the public 24 hours prior to a meeting, but surely I would expect that all supporting documents to an agenda item would be provided to board members at least 24 hours prior to a meeting. So I would make a motion to amend the agenda to remove any discussion of item 2300.
Is there a second to that motion? Ask again, is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Thank you.
So, we're back to approval of the agenda. We have a motion from Lynn, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second from?
Brian.
From Brian. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Pat, we'll start with you.
German aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Rapsin aye.
Holland aye?
Gurkey no.
Bell aye.
Okay, motion approves. Now, if the rest can be as this easy, we'll be just great. Item number four, recognition, Sandy.
Thank you. We have some very special guests with us this evening. We have the two Destination Imagination teams that went to globals. So while you gather up front with your coaches, managers, and district coordinator, I'll give a little background. DI is an international creative problem-solving program for both K-12 students and university-level students. The Hudson School District has participated in DI for the past 10 years, and due to the ongoing support of parents, community, and the school district, the program continues to be a great experience for our students. For the 2011-12 school year, Hudson supported 25 teams. These teams competed against other Western Wisconsin teams in Spooner on March 24th. Eleven of those teams then went on to state at Stevens Point. You can already see the creativity flowing right here, right? On April 14th, 2012, these teams competed against 400 teams statewide. We then had two teams advance to globals in Knoxville, Tennessee. Our middle school team competed against 70-plus teams and took seventh place. The high school team competed against over 25 teams and took 16th place. Who's taking the lead, or do I just turn it over and you go from there? Managers tonight to include team manager of the Hudson High School, Roger Davis, and the middle school team, Kathy Kepulis and Tom Wareham.
I just want to say that, you know, the success of this program, obviously besides the extreme creativity of the students in this district, really rests on the volunteers that we have that come forward every year to help manage the teams. They spend probably three to four hours at least every week preparing the meetings and just basically guiding the students through the year. It is a student-led program, so it's really up to these guys. They do everything, and it's incredibly hard as adults to sit back, reserve your judgment, watch them, watch them try, watch them not succeed the first time, which is actually better sometimes than succeeding the first time, as you guys know. And I just, I can't say enough about the adults that keep coming back. I think it has to be probably one of the most consistent volunteer efforts in our whole district, and we've had these managers return year after year. Kathy and Roger both have been with us many years. Kathy had a co-manager, Tom Wareham, who's not here, so again, just praise, you know, highest praises for our team managers.
And Teams, can I ask you to turn around so you face the board? That way you can get on the camera better as well. All right. I would hopefully, Roger, you going to come up too?
Can I really just, one unique? One unique thing about this year was a couple of the high school students, two of them are here tonight, Kevin Pezzle and Aaron Coier participated or were enrolled in the project-based learning course in the high school this year. And it's the first year that this course has been offered. It is a step towards this 2025 vision, so it's a real step. Part of the uniqueness for these kids is that they were able to mix in the DI component doing their community service work within that class setting. So we have an outcome of, in the case for those kids, they did a community service challenge. So we served the community, they were able to do DI, and get some credit for it at the high school level. So those are all really good things where this innovation and collaboration and creative thinking, all those things that we're trying to point towards from a vision standpoint are starting to come to fruition. So I just wanted to mention that PBL course was a very unique and first-time adventure this year.
Will you help with the mic? I'm hoping they'll each introduce themselves and then step to the side that way.
I'm sure they will.
Tell us what grade you're in as well.
Seventh grade.
And your name is?
Andy Richardson, going into eighth grade.
My name is Kate Milanefei, and I'm going into eighth grade as well.
My name is Grace Kazak, and I'm also going into eighth grade.
My name is Jack Johnson, and I'm going into eighth grade.
My name is Ethan Kepulis, and I'm also going into eighth grade.
My name is Emily Schlep, and I'm going into eighth grade.
I'm Shawna Green, and I'm going to be a senior this year.
I'm Erin Coier, and I'm going to be a junior, and this is supposed to be Ty Davis, who's going to be a senior.
And I'm Kevin Pelzal, and I'm going to be a senior too.
I'm Kathy Kepulis, one of the managers for the now-eighth-grade team. I just wanted them, in the true spirit of DI, to kind of give just a sentence about what they like about DI. So I'm going to have my team, and then if the high school team wants to come up with something, I'm sure they can come up with at least one thing.
I think one of my favorite things about DI, I really like practicing our plays we come up with.
One of my favorite things about DI is brainstorming and talking about ideas with my new friends that I met through DI.
One of my favorite things about DI is it's just fun to do after school.
Probably coming up with the solution to the challenge that we picked.
I like meeting new people.
One of my favorite things in doing DI is like the art aspect, as well as the acting and creative problem-solving.
My favorite thing about DI is being able to communicate better with other people that aren't in DI, along with seeing the smile on a little kid's face when they figure out a challenge, or, you know, just helping them in general.
My favorite things about DI is doing things that you wouldn't get to do anywhere else, like making this puppet, and also figuring out how to apply these skills that you learn and use them in your real life.
I really like doing these little things called instant challenges, where they're like little problems that you have to solve really quickly, and you have to work together with your team. It's a lot of fun.
And just one more thing that I wanted to make note, well, actually, a couple more things. The project-based learning kind of strategy of learning that is kind of coming into play in the high school and things like that is very evident in DI. And also, what DI does is it integrates subjects, which I think is very, very important to have subjects all tie into each other. So it's project-based learning, integrated subjects. The kids are learning math, they're learning language, they're learning all the different subjects that are so important to their education and academics. One thing that one of the students mentioned was getting to know people, and our team, the seventh-grade team, had a chance to be a buddy team to a team from South Korea. So the global aspect of DI is very, very prominent, even more so than eight years ago. I mean, the global teams from all over the world are, there is a huge presence, they're winning competitions. I mean, it is very much a global competition, a global get-together, basically, creativity. Thank you.
I'd like to just kind of follow up on what Kathy said. I think it was eight or nine years ago when we first met, there were teams from around the world there. They weren't a very big presence, there weren't a lot of them, and they typically weren't being recognized. They typically weren't coming in really in the top 10. And now, it's just amazing, nine years later, how huge the global presence is, and also how they are now really sort of dominating in those top 10 recognition spots. I'm happy to say that Hudson always, they're always recognized in the top 10 or 20 in each challenge that they go to, but what it's really said to me is that this has truly become a global program, and that what we're looking at is, you know, in a day and age of standards and standardized scores and standardized assessments, DI is a unique program in that we are actually able to look globally at these assessments that they go through when they're there, and they're compared to teams around the world based on the same standards. So, you know, there are really no differences. Where in our country, our education system might be this, and we might have AP and GT and GPA and all these things that they might not have, the identical situations in South Korea, Turkey, Poland. This is a program that is recognized now around the world. So when our teams go there and they meet other teams, they have so much in common, and they can actually be assessed on things that they have in common. So it's really a language of creativity that's opened up a whole new world, I think, and I think it would be very wise of our district to continue the generous support that you've given us, and also to look into, you know, maybe a way to bring it into the schools without ever, you know, without making it the GT program, without ever making it an exclusive program, because we don't want to do that. Our strength is in the program, in the fact that the program is open to everybody, so. You guys have any questions for the kids?
Any questions from the board, or any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
You know, DI is a program that our students benefit, our community benefits, and the Hudson School District benefits from. It's a wonderful program where students get to develop their 21st-century skills. And Liz, you talked about, I think there were other comments as well, about the integration with our strategic vision, HSD 2025, and the seven graduate learner outcomes. And DI really addresses those in a very integrated way. And so we're very fortunate, the strength of the program and all of our volunteer coaches who spend oodles of hours doing this work from the bottom of their heart and their passion for it. And also, Liz, we appreciate your leadership and your passion for moving this program forward and making it so strong in Hudson.
Well, Anita Stillwell too, because she's really great.
Yes, Anita Stillwell should be recognized as well for her support.
Mr. President, I just have one comment.
Yeah.
Is just, first of all, congratulations to Teams and Liz and all the volunteers. Appreciate all your efforts as well. And I agree with you that creativity and problem-solving is kind of what's, one of the core kind of values of, I think, of our economy, of what, you know, in this country. And as I talk to people from other countries, like in China and things like that, who educate their children in the U.S., it's always about, hey, it's more creative, it's problem-solving, it's not so much, you know, high-stakes test, it's kind of the outcomes that the graduates get when they come out of schools in the U.S. So I think it's, you know, a great program that kind of encapsulates that. So it's great to see how excited the students were about it, and it's a great program. So thank you very much.
Well said. Thank you very much for your participation. We're proud of you, and continue to do the good work you're doing. Thank you.
Next, we'll ask Nancy Toll to come up by the mic. We're very fortunate to have Nancy in the district as our district technology coordinator. Nancy recently earned the Certified Education Technology Leader designation by passing a rigorous certification exam. Nancy's only one of 39 folks in the nation who passed the certification the first time, and is only one of two in the state of Wisconsin to receive this certification as well. So you want to say in a nutshell, some of the, about the exam?
It's put on by COSA, the Consortium of School Networking, which is an advocacy group for educational technology in Washington, D.C. And so they created a certification for technology leaders across the nation in education. And so you go, there's a multiple-choice exam you have to take, and then there's an essay part too that you have to take. Based on that, they score you. Got it?
Again, congratulations. Very proud of you.
Any comments or questions for Nancy?
Mr. President?
Yes.
We are very fortunate to have Nancy and her leadership, leading our instructional technology services department. And as we look forward to advances in technology and moving that graduate learner outcome forward, Nancy is going to play even more key role in the leadership for moving us forward into the future. Our students are going to benefit from her leadership. So thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. We will move on to agenda item number five, superintendent's report.
Mr. President and board members, I'm very pleased to announce that we received a generous donation, again, an annual donation from the Knights of Columbus. Corey McIntyre and I met this afternoon with John Knudsen, who is the Grand Knight from the Knights of Columbus, the St. Croix Council Number 1762. And they have an annual event often called the Tootsie Roll Drive that sponsors citizens with physical and intellectual disabilities. And this year, they have presented us with a donation of $1,272.44 to support our students with disabilities, severe disabilities. And this will allow us to have extended learning opportunities that these students wouldn't have. So we're very fortunate for their continued support of our students and the additional opportunities that are provided because of this generous donation.
Thank you, and thanks to the Knights of Columbus for that gift. We appreciate it. Item number six, reports, Nancy Sweet, elementary, middle school, and high school class sizes.
Okay, and we'll start with elementary. What is projected and is part of your board material is the kind of report that HR gives to personnel on a fairly regular basis, and occasionally to the board. A caveat for all of these enrollment numbers, a very strong caveat, is that it is a point in time, and enrollment on one day is different on the next. We have students withdrawing, we have students entering, and that will happen right up until school starts and even during the school year, particularly in August, you know, just prior to school starting. There's a lot of activity of people moving out, people moving in. So that's one thing to remember, this is a point in time. Now, this is the elementary chart. Right now, we're showing a total of 2502, 2,502 students registered. That does, that is down slightly from the official count, which is taken on the third Friday in September. And in 2011, the most recent September count, it was 2543, so about 41 students, but I would caution you that it's early to make any conclusions on that. I do want to point you in the direction of kindergarten. Everyone's interested in kindergarten. We have right now registered 391 students. In February, that's when the registration took place across the district, that number in February was 321. So since February, we are up 70 kindergarten students. So I think that's important to note, and that number will continue to change. Otherwise, you can see by the color coding that, and I'll mention the guidelines, kindergarten through grade two, the guidelines for enrollment are a minimum of 18 and a maximum of 22. Those are guidelines, they're guidelines versus strict numbers. And then grades three through five, third through fifth grade, 22 to 27. So we monitor based on those guidelines, and we indicate those sections in specific schools that are over the maximum guidelines, and we monitor that, because that also can change. Right now, we have six grade levels in four of our schools that are over maximum guidelines slightly. And you can see 22.5, 22.5, 22.5, et cetera, up to 23 per section. We do have right now 10 sections in, again, four schools that are under the minimum enrollment guidelines. Right now, we do not have any capped grade levels, and that means that if these maximum enrollment guidelines, those particular grade levels in those particular schools, the ones in pink, if those were to begin to climb further, then we would consider capping. And we do have two schools among our six that receive students from capped grade levels. And those are North Hudson is a receiving school for capping that might occur at Holton or might occur at Hudson Prairie, and Willow River is a receiving school for any capped grade levels at EP Rock and Rivercrest. And so right now, we don't have capping. We have in the past, but we'll keep a close eye on this for sure. And I'll move on to?
Any questions regarding?
The secondary level, unless people have questions.
Elementary school? Numbers?
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay.
Then, present it a little bit differently. If we go to the middle school. First, at the top of the page is a summary, and this enrollment data was taken today. So as of today, eighth grade, 442, seventh grade, 428, and sixth grade, 444. Those are the registered numbers. So the total right now registered at middle is 1314, and the official count taken in September 2011 was 12, 1298. So we're up slightly based on the data that was taken today. Then, this analysis in the middle of the page is not one that we do routinely, but we did recently. And that relates to our decisions for additional staffing, which would occur later in the agenda tonight. But you can see in language arts, grade six, seven, eight, the number of sections. And you might wonder why there are 33 language arts sections in grade six and seven. That's because there's two. There's two different language arts curriculum that are offered, and students in sixth and students in seventh take both. One's focused on reading, the other's focused on writing. And the, so what we're presenting here are the number of sections in the second column that are over the 27 students. They could be over by one or more. And then, in the next column, we're showing the number of sections that are under. And if you go down to the bottom line, the core subjects, there are 246 core subjects, and 44 or 18% are over 27 students, and 87 or 35% right now are under. What we, what they do at the building level, and they do this continuously, it's called balancing. So these numbers will shift, the numbers that are over, the numbers that are under. They are always seeking to create more balanced classrooms so that students experience, you know, similar enrollments in similar core subject areas. There are some specific and unique challenges at the middle school having to do with scheduling, and one of them, one of those challenges is the house concept. The middle school with the enrollment that they have, the over enrollment that they have, flowing over into Hudson Prairie now, is, one of their primary goals is to try to maintain students in their house for all of their subjects, and to keep them with the other students in their house, you know, to keep that small learning community. And it is, you've heard Dan Coke, Principal Coke, speak about this before, and I'm sure he'll speak about it again at some point, but it's a challenge, and it is not, and it's eroding. It's not perfect, but that's one of the reasons that you might see and do see here, some significant variation between enrollment in one class versus another. The other unique challenge at the middle school is the math curriculum. You can jump in Sandy anytime, but the math curriculum, there are a variety of levels of math, and the district has sought specifically to provide those different levels of math and advanced courses, right? And in some cases, there's only one section. And so the middle school finds itself in the position where they have to schedule that first. And once they schedule that one section of, let's say, pre-algebra or algebra at a different grade level, everything else has to be scheduled around that. And so then the numbers get imbalanced. But those are two of the very significant challenges that they try to work with. We are including here only the core subjects, the electives are not included. The analysis, there's multiple variables with electives, and electives are offered only at the eighth grade, at the middle school. And these variables include but are not limited to, some of the programs have equipment limitations, some of the programs have stations. So you don't have 22 or 27 in a class, there's only 15 stations or something like that. And some, and the size of the classroom are non-classroom settings, fides in a gym, you know. And then we have some pilot programs, and there's some general inapplicability of the guidelines that are, that work, generally speaking, for the core subjects. Special education courses are not included in this analysis either, because it's, they are governed, their guidelines are governed otherwise, state and federal governance. If you have questions about this, I know Dan Coke is in the audience, Sandy is here, if they're curriculum-oriented. Okay. Okay. Then I'll go on to the high school then. And looking at the total number registered, it's 12th grade, in 12th grade, 405, 11th, 439, 10th, 405, 9th, 472. That's a lot of kids. The total is 1721. That compares to the official count taken in September 2011 of 1649. You know, again, this is a point in time, I can't stress that too much, you know, we can't trust these numbers completely, but that's what we have, that's the number that we have registered in the system right now. Then, if you look at the high school course analysis then, they can do this a little bit easier than the middle school can, and it's by department, not necessarily by grade level, because students of each grade level are enrolled in some of these classes. You can see the number of sections, and you can see And you can see that of the two hundred and fifty core subject sections offered at the high school, seventy-four or about a third of them are over by one or more students. And eighteen, only about seven percent are under. And then, you can see a certain range there. You'll see later on the agenda, something that was recommended by the Personnel Committee, you'll see some additional recommendation for some math personnel, which could, which would improve certainly, the math numbers here. The bullets at the bottom here, again, some interpretation of this data are similar to the middle school. We have a little bit more variability here in that students are able to change enrollment. In other words, drop and add in particular classes or courses before the semester begins and even within the first three days of school. And this, that sort of thing rarely happens at the middle level, but it happens more commonly at the high school. So, again, the numbers would shift. Balancing of courses and classes, like the middle school, occurs every day. And the electives are not included, special ed is not included. And here, we're making reference also to the STRIVE program because it's designated as an alternative at-risk program requiring small class size. So, if there are any questions at all here?
Nancy, historically, of these numbers, as we see them, sort of prior to the beginning of a school year, historically, do they tend to go higher, lower, or is it unpredictable?
I think it's, I would say unpredictable.
So, it'd go either way?
I would hate, yeah. I can't prove a trend. I would say it's unpredictable, and I would want you to keep that certainly in mind. And I do want the board to know that next month, in August, I'll be giving, with personnel from the middle and high school, a capacity report on room utilization.
Okay.
Okay? And that kind of completes the picture a little bit. You know, this is the enrollment, but where are we putting these students? Okay?
Right.
Mr. President, thank, Nancy, just, and you've kind of answered this in a way. And I know balancing is an ongoing issue. But when all is said and done, and the drop adds and all the dust settles, to what extent are we able to sort of, you know, even out that range a little bit? Is it, I guess, you know, a month into the school year, would we see significant improvement? Or would we still likely have ranges of sixteen to thirty-two?
Well, I ask that question of both levels. And they are optimistic that they will be able to even this out. Generally, they will do that with students, especially at the middle school, new students that enroll. Because they do hesitate to remove a student from a house area with students that they've been with. But if new students enroll, they're going to look for a place to balance that enrollment more. And at the high school, you know, it's a little bit different motivation. But certainly, they say that they are able to smooth this out a bit. And we could look at this again after school starts. And see what that looks like.
Yeah, I would find that interesting.
It's very challenging. I don't do that work, others do. It's very complicated, very complicated. When you say Sandy, Sandy is my partner here at the district level. And we look at this data regularly together. And we do talk with the people at the building level. I don't know if you want to say anything?
There's just such a wide variety of interests of all of our students. So, if someone is in an AP English class and then in the P.L.W. class, and that, those are all just singletons. And it just creates a very difficult, very difficult situations to balance out those classes.
I understand that, right. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandy. And thank you, Nancy. Moving on then to Tim, two thousand twelve, thirteen preliminary budget.
Okay, thank you. Before we use the preliminary budget, and we'll stress preliminary, the D.P.I. did release their aid estimates for next year. And those are just what they say, they're estimates. And they are subject to change as we go through the budget process culminating with your adoption of the budget in October. But I'll just run through the major summary budget assumptions. And that is level student membership aid units. And that's, I'll say, that's different from what's being presented up here. Aid units are figured differently and figured at different points in time. We had a decrease in federal grants of one point one million dollars this year. And that's the ending of a federal program that spanned over two years. We had an increase in equalization aid of approximately, again, an estimate of approximately one point five million over last year. So, again, we had a loss of one point one million, a gain of one point five. The state equalization aid, again, is an estimate until final statewide numbers come in from all school districts. And then, they release that final aid number in October. When we look at the tax levy, the tax levy for the general fund is proposed during a preliminary basis, about two point six six percent. If you look at the total tax levy, and that includes the general fund tax levy and debt service, that would be a total increase of three point three percent. And that includes the purchase of St. Croix Meadows. We also run into a situation that's a little unusual in that we've got a one-time special aid for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen year. And that aid would equate to an additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the district. However, because of the history of the district underlevying, we will not be eligible for that aid. The levy would have to go up tremendously to capture that one-time aid. The levy projection, the under levy, so that's the amount that could be levied but will not be levied, is projected at this point to be over sixteen million dollars. And that will most likely, again, as we've looked at history, will set the district either number one or probably number two spot. And that's in comparing a district such as Madison, that's much larger than we are. So, again, looking at that history, that's the loss of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that additional. And that's, again, a one-time program. If we look at some of the line items, you can see that first line, and I'm just going to go through the major pieces of the budget. Property taxes for the general fund, again, would go up two point six six percent. The equalization aid, and that's the estimate, and that's estimated at about one point five, one point five million dollar increase. So, it'll go up about six point eight percent. And then, again, the federal sources, that's that federal grant over the two years that was in the budget. And the final year of that grant was two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And so, that, those dollars will come out of the budget. And that's why, the reason for that large decrease. So, overall, general fund revenues are up two point one one percent. The expenditure side of the budget, salaries and benefits are at a three point one four percent increase. And that includes the new positions, they've been incorporated into this budget, the new positions that you'll see tonight later. We also have some of our other supply items under non-capital objects are decreased three percent, a little over three percent. And so, we come in at a three point one percent increase in total expenditures. It's just about approximating where the C.P.I. ended last year. So, we still have a deficit in this preliminary budget, as you can see down at the very bottom, of four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. But again, some of these numbers may change as we go through and get to the final adoption. And then, down below, you can see the debt service levy and then the general fund levy again, repeated. So, that's a three point three percent increase. Any questions?
Questions of Tim? Tim, I'm assuming that, you know, this is, as you said, preliminary, and it's showing now a negative variance that we'll get to a balanced number at some point before we put this to bed.
We will, when we get the final aid number, we're going to have a better idea. Like I say, Tom, there may be some additional work here. I can't guarantee that it will be a truly balanced budget, but we'll work towards that.
Okay. Comments, Brian?
Just, Tom, just one comment. The Finance Committee, we discussed that, you know, perhaps using some of the fund balance to kind of offset the tax load, given the economy and, you know, some of the other pressure on the taxpayers. So, besides trying to be pretty conservative in terms of budget increases and really kind of having a, you know, a conservative budget, we also may be appropriate, the Finance Committee, our recommendation going forward, you know, perhaps would be to pull some funds out of the general fund. I mean, out of the fund balance.
Yeah. And, I'm sorry, just as an overview, we do have a graph, chart that we put together addressing what equalization aids and the federal revenues have looked like over the past ten, eleven, eleven, twelve, and then the budget for twelve thirteen. So, you can see, if you look from ten, eleven to twelve thirteen, we're still actually down about a million four hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you look at the ten, eleven, and eleven, twelve, the seven hundred, roughly seven hundred thousand dollars, and the one point three million are primarily the results of that federal program. But again, looking across at total revenues, we're down, when we look, when we compare the equalization aids and the federal sources, we're down about one point four million.
Okay. Comments or questions for Tim, all right? Tim, we'll continue on then to the St. Croix Meadows environmental assessment of mold.
This is a result of, we've had some rumors that continue to circulate in the community regarding concerns for mold. The board had been updated previously in some previous reports. We've had our construction experts through. We did address those. We did talk about the renovation that will occur with the, on the interior of the building. So, things such as sheet rock, insulation, et cetera, will be pulled out of the building. And, but again, we feel that, we feel the need to address the subject one more time. And the way we're going to address that is we have brought in Paul Johnson, who's the Vice President and Director of Operations for Nova Consulting. Paul is a certified industrial hygienist. And he's got about twenty-four years of experience in various levels of air quality, mold, et cetera. And so, Paul did go through St. Croix Meadows and has provided a report that you've got on board books. And he's here to present his findings and then answer any questions, additional questions that you may have.
Paul, can you pull that up? Is it on, if it's, if the tab is up, it means it's on?
Tab is up.
Okay.
Think I'm, am I okay?
Sometimes it's hard to hear you.
Can you hear it? Pleasantly surprised. Up a little more.
A little closer, can you?
Little closer.
There you go.
I was pleasantly surprised when I went on the walkthrough of the main building over at St. Croix Meadow at the condition it was in, and a good surprise. I expected the conditions to be much worse in relation to water infiltration and subsequent mold growth. Through my experience, when you have a building that has been mothballed or decommissioned and has sat vacant for up to twelve years, as St. Croix Meadow has, a lot of times, conditions deteriorate really quickly and are much worse. So, as my opening, you know, I was pleasantly surprised when I went in the building. When I went in the building, the first thing I usually do is I pitch.
Excuse me, Paul, we're still having trouble hearing. I'm sorry.
I'll scoot up a little bit closer.
Just pull the whole mic.
Pull it closer to you.
Okay, try that. Okay, that sounds a little better. When I go in buildings, the first thing I do is I tune in my senses. And I really didn't notice discernible distinct mold odors in there. It was dry when I went in there due to the weather conditions. All of the HVAC systems, the ventilation systems were all off since the building has been shut down for a number of years. Now, what I did see as I toured the building is, on the third level, the highest level, there are many isolated spots where the roof has leaked over the years. And evidence of that is that ceiling tiles, the suspended ceiling tiles, and there are two levels of tiles in the building, have fallen down. And there's anywhere from two tiles that have fallen to groups of twenty tiles. And so, there's little piles of tile throughout the third floor where the water has leaked. And there are many of those spots. Associated with those spots is where I saw the mold growth. It wasn't necessarily a coating of mold throughout the whole building. It was in the isolated spots associated with the specific leaks. The central skylight system shows signs of deterioration. And in fact, you can see the water staining has run all the way down to first floor in that. Of course, when I was there, because of our dry conditions, that is all dry right now. Several other places around windows showed minor signs of leaking. Bringing this all together, my opinion is, it is very feasible to remediate that building. You know, I've been involved with thousands of buildings across the country where we have had decommissioned buildings, where we have successfully remediated the mold in those buildings. The recommendation for the remediation is to remove all of the porous materials and building finishes. That includes the sheet rock, the carpeting, mastics, insulation, those types of things that are typically planned to be removed as part of a renovation such as this anyway. One of the keys for a successful remediation will be, once those materials are removed from the building, we want to do a thorough cleaning of the surfaces that are now left in place, which is the structure of the building, the steel and concrete members. And the cleaning of that is simply cleaning with detergents and elbow grease. And with that, my feeling is, we can get a remediated building that is safe for our student population to populate without a problem. We can do confirmatory testing at that time before it's rebuilt to prove that we've been successful with our remediation.
Great, thank you, Paul. You going to stay here for any questions or comments on the board? Anybody?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Dan.
Question. Thanks for those comments, Paul. My question has to do with, you know, conceivably, over time, you know, the conditions will get worse there. So, I guess my question to you is, can you give us a sense, based on your, you know, experience and profession, you know, what our window of opportunity is here? I mean, are we looking at potentially a few years before things might conceivably get a lot worse and the cost for remediation might start escalating? Can you speak to that?
The answer to that is, is the control of the water that's entering the building. And of course, the water entering the building is through the roof and through the drain pipes that are leaking. And as water goes in, you get into wet seasons, that's where the mold has a chance to grow and amplify. As long as the building has a level of ventilation maintained so that as we get water in the building, it dries, evaporates, then the mold won't proliferate. So, it's really a matter of keeping that. The rule of thumb is mold will start to grow in as little as forty-eight hours if it has food source and water source. So, the control of those can keep us status quo indefinitely if we mainly keep that moisture in check and not allow it to get worse than it already is.
Great, thank you. Pat?
Okay. You're saying the roof? The roof is leaking. So, we plan to, that would have to be totally taken up our, the roof would be totally redone, correct, in this whole process? That's what we would be doing to, because we'd have to alleviate, could there be stuff in there, under the roofing or up in the upper part that we would, and we would just address that by taking that all out, putting a new roof on it?
Yes, and Mr. Erickson, it looks like you're ready to speak, so you would like to jump in. But yes, the roof needs to be repaired or replaced, and at this point, there are significant repairs to do it. So, I think the plans in place are to repair the roof. That should be one of the first items. Of course, you don't want to do work inside of the building and then have it get wet again. So, the roof and those roof drain pipes are the first thing as far as controlling mold that should be addressed. And again, to buy time, patches, things like that can be instituted to prolong our time until we can get the entire roof replaced.
Yeah, I think Paul answered some of Dan's question as well as yours, Pat, and I can go a little more in depth. Our plan is, once we close and own the building, then we'll be able to get into the patching like Paul has mentioned, and do some of the minor patching. When the building, when we start construction on the building, then the whole roof will be replaced, because the roof is in poor shape. And, that was already stated in the report that you had several months ago. We knew about that, and that was taken into account into the value of the building. So, those things, again, will be addressed in the interim through patching, and then in the long term with the construction of the building by replacing the roof.
Mary?
Probably a question for Tim. You know, one of the things that we have read, that people have said, that there is a gaping hole in the roof. And, we've talked about leaks in the roof, and we've talked about a skylight where you can see, and it is a skylight, but are there gaping holes in the roof? Or is it just kind of the repairs you're talking about?
Yeah, that's a good question. I have seen that information circulated. There is no gaping hole in the roof. What we have is, the main thing, the only thing I can think of is, if someone were peering in from the outside looking in, they can see the light coming down from the skylight. But as far as a gaping hole, there is no gaping hole in the roof. We have leaks.
And I see, Paul, you're confirming that with your nod there as well.
You can see where the water is coming in through the roof, but there's not holes that you could stick your hand through per se or anything like that.
Other comments or questions? Paul, I understand that, you know, there may be some confusion in the public regarding comparing, for example, my home, comparing that to this type of structure, and the concerns may be borne out of thinking that, you know, a wood structure, primarily wood structure, would be more vulnerable to something like this and create more concern. Do you want to speak to that at all?
My comment on that is twofold. When you're dealing with mold growth, you're looking at water sources and food sources. In buildings, the food sources are typically cellulose-based products. Those would include sheet rock, because of the paper on the outside of the sheet rock, the mastics that are under tiles, under carpeting, things like that. Those are the surfaces that mold would grow in. Wood studs, wood flooring, that are raw wood, not sealed, of course, are porous materials. So, if you have a mold growth problem, the molds can get into the pores of that wood and create a different set of problems. Now, in the case of the St. Croix Meadows building, one of the things we have going is it's all metal stud work, concrete and steel structure. So, once we get down to the structure, we've actually got good surfaces to be able to clean and remediate properly.
Okay. Brian?
Mr. President, just one comment is, as we talked about this, as we, St. Croix Meadows, the value of it was, it was a prepared site. We had utilities coming in, and we had a structure, and the structure was, you know, was the structure, was the concrete, the steel girders, right? The expectation was that it was going to be a complete renovation, right? And, so I just think it's important, as we're thinking about this, is think about kind of the value of that site was that it was prepared, it was flat, and we had a structure that was usable, a portion was usable, and it was really the structure that was usable. Everything that's porous, all the finishes, the expectation was that, you know, those were not going to be used. So, I think that's just something to, you know, to us to keep kind of top of mind, is kind of what the value of that building was, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you for your report. Before we move into citizens' requests for speak, I'd like to open this with a statement that I've prepared. "After careful thought and consideration, I decided to put some additional controls into our citizens' request to speak as an item on the board's agenda as it relates to civil discourse. While disagreements and differences of opinions are not only part of the process, it can and should be a healthy exercise for us. However, when disagreements on issues turn into personal attacks on individuals, the net result is a deteriorating of a productive process as well as a disintegration of respect for others leading to a loss of community. Personal attacks, false accusations, and innuendo are unwarranted, inappropriate, unproductive, as well as disrespectful, and will not be tolerated as a part of these board meetings. Citizens' request to speak is a courtesy that we have extended to the public because we want to hear their thoughts and concerns about the issues facing us. It's not, however, a right of our citizens or an obligation of the board to offer it as an agenda item. Allow me to read from Policy 76-100, starting with a title or heading, 'Public Comment at Regular Board Meetings,' and this is dated May 11, 2004. Public Comment at Regular Board Meetings. Because the board recognizes the value of public input, the board generally provides time for citizens to comment during regular board meetings. Time for public comments during board meetings is not a requirement of law. The board president and superintendent have the authority under this policy to determine whether a period of public comment will be provided during a given meeting. Such a determination must be made before providing public notice of the meeting." I'd like to move down to another heading in this policy that calls for governance of the manner in which speakers address the board. Same policy. The board encourages people to treat each other with respect, to be polite and courteous to each other, to be tolerant of each other's views, and to maintain self-control. When differences arise, such as civil behavior, will not only help create a positive school climate, but will carry over into the community and society as a whole. With this belief in mind, and to provide citizens with an orderly opportunity to address the entire board, the board will govern the manner in which speakers address the board. Speakers will be reminded to direct all comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members or the audience. The board president or other presiding officer will encourage citizens to put personnel concerns in writing and to deliver them to the board president or to the superintendent so that they can be referred to the appropriate administrator or committee, and, if appropriate, placed on a future agenda for discussion in an open or closed meeting in compliance of the open meeting law. The board will not tolerate demeaning comments, personal attacks, or other comments which have discussed in public meeting would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of a student, employee, or other person. The board president or presiding officer may prohibit a speaker from further addressing the board at that particular meeting or at providing an oral warning, may request that the citizen leave the meeting. Such action may be taken if a speaker engages in conduct that includes making profane, abusive, indecent, or threatening remarks, or engages in otherwise disorderly conduct under circumstances which tend to cause or provoke a disturbance. From this point on, and this point forward, citizens' requests to speak will be reserved for those who wish to speak to the issues. It will not be an opportunity to question people's character or integrity, nor will I allow accusations of disingenuousness, manipulation, or deception during these public meetings. The important issues we face do not include a deceitful or manipulative board or administration, and we've spent far too much time and money defending false accusations. Ultimately, the continued success and progress of our district, the quality of our service to our children, families, and this community are at stake. Within the confines of this and other board functions, we will treat each other with respect, even when we don't agree on the issues. If you wish to address this board and administration utilizing the citizens' request to speak agenda item, you'll be required to limit your comments to issues only and not direct any form of attack at any one individual with a purpose of discrediting, questioning, or challenging their integrity or character. If you're unable to abide by this requirement, you'll forfeit your opportunity to continue speaking. Any disturbances affecting the order of the board meeting could result in your removal from this premise. In summary, I know this has been heavy, but in summary, let me reiterate that differing viewpoints on issues are welcome. Disrespectful behavior and personal attacks are not. If you have an issue that relates to a personnel matter, or if you have evidence of wrongdoing by an individual on this board or on the staff, the appropriate way to handle this is to bring it to the attention of myself or to the proper school official. It's not appropriate to bring it to a public meeting. Thank you for understanding our need to make these changes, and I look forward to a healthy and productive interchange with you. I'll just make another comment also, that we have adjusted the citizens' request to speak form that outlines the comments that I've just made, including that I'll just highlight, submitting the request form to the board secretary prior to the topic of interest being introduced by the chairperson. And then we're also asking and requiring that you list the specific topics to be addressed so that we can make sure that we're in control and following these policies. Citizens who list non-specific topics will not be recognized to speak. You have five minutes to comment, which we think is fair, and we also outline the policy here on the form as well. So, thank you very much. And with that, we have one request to speak and another one coming. And I'll invite Brian Huser to the...
Good evening. I'm Brian Huser. I live at 859 McDeermid Drive here in Hudson. First of all, I'm here, and sitting with me back there is Tess Rosardi, and we're the co-directors of the WCEA Hudson Unit, and in short, that is your teachers' union. And I guess what we are here to say is that we both serve on a committee, the Teacher Advisory Committee. There are other committees, of course, that the district has, including Teacher Evaluation, Insurance Committee, there's Technology Committee. And, what we'd like to say is thank you for including us in part of the, at least having a say in the decision-making process. We feel that Superintendent Boan Egobrotten has done a good job of including us. We understand that she takes her direction from the board, and so we'd like to say thank you to you also. We think it's a positive way to continue moving forward. We may not and do not always agree on the policy that ends up coming out of it, but at least it gives us a chance to express what we feel is important, and I think it gives the administration and board a chance to explain to us, you know, why we don't want to do what you'd like us to do. So, it's a good way of being able to at least exchange ideas. So, we'd like to say thank you for doing that. We look forward to continuing it. We meet during the school year. We've met this summer, and we anticipate meeting again in the fall. So, thank you for allowing us to do that and have the opportunity to have dialogue with you and with the administration.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Kurt Weiss. Name and address, please.
My name is Kurt Weiss. I live at 613 Cedar Drive North, North Hudson. I really didn't plan on addressing the board this evening, but that diatribe from the board president prompted me to read this to you. "First Amendment of the Constitution, Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Obviously, the Congress can't make those laws, but it looks like the board president and the superintendent have done that here in St. Croix County.
Comments? Responses?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Will these new guidelines that you've just read be published or printed or online someplace so that the public can find them and that we can find them?
Policies are available, I think, to the public on request? Is that correct? Okay.
So, the only way for the public to get these is to ask somebody at the board office for them?
Are you suggesting we put it online or something?
Yeah. No, I'm thinking about how to make it easy for people to find it without having to make a request.
Sure. I think, good suggestion.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
Okay. Good suggestion, thank you. Other comment or questions? Dan?
Mr. President, I just want to support your comments, and I think the only thing I'd like to add to that is that, you know, as a board of education, and seeing these kids out here at the beginning of our session, you know, I think we have to keep in mind that we're also role models in, you know, how we conduct ourselves, both as board members and as participants in this process. So, you know, I think in addition to everything that you've said, I'd like to just put that out there as, because of the fact that we're a board of education, that I think we also have to be good models of the behavior that we expect of our students in the school.
I thank you also for your comments, and I agree totally with them. I think we do have laws on libel in this country, and I don't know. I know politicians get things all the time, but truth is something that is very necessary, and like, there is an avenue, if you think there is, things that are happening that should not be happening, to bring it in to the administration. We do not say we do not want to hear it. You can't, you know, to have it come out in public without some defense, or defense from them or us, or whatever, but we do have avenues for those. Thank you.
Brian?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that, completely agree with your comments, and also, you know, I personally, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I personally welcome comments that are contrary to maybe a decision we've made, or, and we need to hear that, and it's important to me personally to hear that. But I do think, I think doing that conversation with respect and tolerance is exactly what this community needs, what the country needs right now. And, so I wholeheartedly support the freedom of speech, but doing it in a way that allows us to kind of get done what we need to get done. But I do want to hear when people don't agree. I think that's important information. I think all the board members would agree on that. So, I just want to say that I appreciate your comments and completely support... So, I just want to say that I appreciate your comments and completely support them.
And I hope I made that clear. The intention is not to curb people's freedom to speak. It's the manner in which we speak, which is more productive and respectful, so...
Mr. President, can I ask one other thing?
Sure.
Is what you've read, what the new policy will be, is that some, a change to some kind of policy that we have written somewhere else? Is that a change?
No, it's not a change. As a matter of fact, as I'd mentioned, it's dated May 11th, 2004, the policy.
Okay, that policy, but what you said, the new stuff that you're going to be...
Oh, the new stuff on the form?
No, the new rules. You talked about keeping it on subject, and is that stuff that's already in the original policy from 2004?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So, yeah, thanks. Okay.
Mr. President, you know, I think that everybody up here certainly agrees with one part of what Mr. Wiess just said, the value of the freedom of speech guaranteed in the First Amendment. But there is a time, place, and manner for that, and there is, you know, the Board of Education and the meetings here are definitely what our President just identified by policy, and it's based on our policy. And we're just making that very clear to the audience and to people who come. But again, I know everyone up here supports the First Amendment, and time, place, and manner are important as well.
Okay. I'm sorry about the heavy comment, but I thought it was necessary. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on then to, I've gotten a request from Ms. Sweet for some comments from administrators and principals, so...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I asked that this item be part of the Board's agenda this evening. Individual principals and other administrators came forward on their own, asking for an opportunity to speak to the Board regarding the public criticism of district leadership, the majority of which has been directed towards Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbroton. The criticism has been oral and written at Board meetings and in our local media. We want the Board and anyone else who may hear or see the content of this Agenda item to know that Mary was not involved in any way, had no input into what is said, nor does she know at this moment what will be said. This is very important due to the nature of some of the criticism. The principals have chosen Willow River Principal Peg Schumaker and Principal Dan Koch to speak on their behalf. Dan, Peg, and principal colleagues, would you please come forward? My understanding is that Principal Koch will speak first, and directors will speak individually after the principals. Dan?
Are we on here?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Dan.
First, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And Peg and I are speaking to you this evening on behalf of our principal team, and I can testify to the fact that Mary has no knowledge of this because we completed this just about two hours ago. For the record, the principal team consists of Travis Behringer, Amy Hamborg, Dan Koch, Laura Love, Ann Mitchell, Suzie Prather, Dolph Schmidt, and Peg Schumaker. Principal Love is out of town, but her voice is also reflected in tonight's comments. I'm going to read the prepared statement just as it is on the text here. "We're here because we have concerns about recent public criticisms of the district and its leadership. The irony of the situation is that leadership is a trait that we admire. As a society, we look for it everywhere because it is the catalyst for meaningful progress and success in any endeavor. Some forms of leadership are rooted in rhetoric while others are rooted in evidence. We believe evidence-based leadership doesn't materialize without courage. Courage is a vital human quality because it makes all the others possible. All of us, in the unfolding of our daily lives, face moments of decision-making requiring courage. Though not dramatic or attention-getting, these decisions are important and impactful. They come with a certain amount of forethought and planning, oftentimes consternation and concern. Regardless, decisions are made so progress can be achieved. The leadership dynamic significantly, however, changes when one chooses or is chosen to lead in a public setting. The courage and the personal traits required to do so, exposed to special interest groups, now become potential vulnerabilities. Honesty, transparency, vision, planning, communication style, and integrity all are now subject to manipulation by individuals or groups utilizing distortion, half-truths, falsifying information to undermine initiatives and programs designed to move an organization such as the Hudson School District forward. Leaders to admire fulfill the commitment to work hard, exercise sound judgment, and stay the course during challenging times. The most recent attacks on the district are troublesome. Sir Winston Churchill once said, 'Where there is a great deal of free speech, there is always a certain amount of foolish speech.' Working in the public sector has never been easy. There are those who believe it's acceptable to levy criticism of a public employee or institution, not on the facts, but solely on the grounds of being a taxpayer. Certain critics of the Hudson School District, its employees, and the school board, emboldened by events at the state and national level, have demonstrated through public statements that neither accuracy nor validity is a necessary requirement for criticism. The disappearance of respectful disagreement and civil discourse is disturbing. Educators teach students to read, examine, question, reflect, and then decide. Most importantly, they teach students to do so respectfully. Ultimately, we are led to wonder what it is that these critics want of the school district, its governing board, and its employees. What we know is this: The community, through its elected school board members, has asked for a future-focused vision for our entire district and a plan for achieving success. It has asked for a curriculum that is both foundational and expansive enough to provide opportunity for all students. It has asked that we be sensitive to and care for students who are less fortunate and guide them to success as well. It has asked for highly qualified employees whose skills and professional expertise advance and support student learning. As a district, we have and we will continue to honor these expectations and use them to guide our work. We suggest that it is not always enough to do our best. Sometimes, we have to do what is required. What is required right now is to advocate for students of our district, our staff, and for our community as a whole. Dissident voices need to know that we, as professional educators, will continue to lead and fulfill our responsibilities to carry out the district vision. High expectations, high levels of support, and high accountability provide the framework for success, and they're the hallmarks of a quality organization. The Hudson School District is such an organization.
In thousands of school districts across the country, building and district leadership has been measured to determine the impact on student learning. This body of research has clearly shown that leadership matters. There is a significant relationship between school leadership and student achievement. In the past seven years, the district has created a transparent system in support of student learning. In our district, the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools have established high expectation for district and building administrators and faculty. Each year, we plan, implement, and then we report publicly on student learning goals and results. And why do we do this? Our transparency comes from an effort to keep our constituency informed and challenge ourselves to move to the next level. It is these high expectations that have elevated the district to among the rank of the highest-performing school districts in the state. The Hudson School District presently is in the enviable position of being sought as a model by school districts, other groups, and organizations to present our strategies for success. As a result of the system, we now have individuals being sought to do the same. We have received state and national awards, including the recent recognition as statewide Middle School of Excellence, one of four in the state, as well as Mr. Koch being named Middle School Principal of the Year. These recognitions do not occur by chance. They are a result of intentional design by the Board of Education, our superintendent, and our entire leadership team to create a high-performing system for learning. High expectations and accountability alone do not make a system. Principals and teachers are provided the high level of support from the district in order to keep pace with other high-performing districts in the state. Hudson principals have significant levels of autonomy, although this is not license for us to move outside the framework for success that has been established in the district. Our system is a partnership of informed, supported, and successful district and school leaders. Students in the district receive instruction from high-quality teachers whose practice is rooted in educational research from the best schools in the nation. We are rewarded by the accomplishments of our teachers and the overwhelming evidence of unprecedented student achievement under the direction of a potent leadership team. We are proud of our system. We stand before you this evening with pride. We have, together, cultivated an educational soil which is rich for our students to continue to take root. Thank you for your time, President Holland.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, Peg, and principal colleagues. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. As a member of the district administration, along with the building principals, I wish to speak to criticism that's been directed at the district and specifically at Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbroton. It's arguable that frontline leadership is one of the most important positions in any organization, and when it's necessary to lead in this capacity, only the most talented will rise to the top. Mary's leadership, experience, and commitment to excellence has distinguished herself as a successful leader and as a superintendent in the Hudson School District. Having had the opportunity to work in five districts in three states, I've been a part of many teams, and I've worked with and observed many superintendents. What drew me to Hudson was I believed in Mary and her vision and the plan for this district. I wanted to be a part of this district's high-performing team and be a part of making this district even better and serve the students of Hudson, and I wanted to work for Mary. During my time as Student Services Director here in Hudson, I've had numerous opportunities to work with and observe Mary in a variety of settings. Mary is all about student learning. She has high expectations for all students. She has high expectations for all staff and backs set up with high levels of support. The student learning results are the highest they've ever been in Hudson, and that makes us one of the highest-performing districts in the state, as you've already heard. Mary has demonstrated an outstanding ability to collaboratively develop and implement the vision for this district, and yet give staff the autonomy to carry out the vision in the day-to-day operations. This is evidence that Mary is getting it done and making results happen as a superintendent. Some have claimed Mary is intimidating. To the contrary, I've seen Mary time and time again be compassionate and kind-hearted to others. She has a great sense of humor and an effective communication style, and I've seen Mary go above and beyond on a personal level with others that she has little or no contact with, and it rarely gets noticed. We are and will continue to experience unprecedented change in public education in Wisconsin. While many complain or have excuses for all the effects that these changes may have, Mary sees opportunity. Mary's the kind of person who really can bring about positive change in how a system functions. Mary has successfully led the district through many complex and difficult situations never seen before and has handled them each exceptionally well. Mary's motivation for always going the extra mile seems to come from her commitment to children and her commitment to being the best she can be. I admire her persistence, thoroughness, and professionalism. She's also open to criticism and ideas from others and will listen and adjust if the evidence supports it. She doesn't settle for second best. A culture of continuous improvement is in place in Hudson. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you, and with Mary's leadership, I hope we can get back to the real work of the district, which is student learning and support.
Thank you, Corey.
At a workshop I attended just this week, the presenter reminded us of the importance of leadership at both the district and building level in impacting student achievement. Participants were also reminded of the characteristics of quality leaders, to name a few. They must possess a deep understanding of the work. They must set high goals. They must direct and monitor the work, and they must have strong communication skills. As I listened to those necessary qualities of a leader being described, one name came to mind: Mary Bowen Eggbroton. As one of the elder members of this team, in my 25-plus years in education, I have worked for several superintendents. None compare to Mary when it comes to a focus on student learning. None compare to the level of hard work given 24/7 to the constant demands of the position. None compares in their vision and forward-thinking of moving a district from good to great. Every level of our district is aware of our focus on student learning. Every level is aware of our HSD 2025 vision, and every level knows we are working to develop a collaborative system of excellence. Many of those challenging our work as district leadership would prefer that we keep things as they were in the past. They prefer finding faults or lack of honesty in our actions, and would prefer us not to properly plan for the future of our students. I can assure you that at our district-level meetings, other options and perspectives are discussed. Being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars is at the forefront of any decision, and there's a high level of integrity and honesty in the office of the superintendent. Recommendations and decisions are not moved forward without thoroughly being debated and reviewed. The thoughts and viewpoints of the whole administrative team are sought out and valued. I truly feel honored to work with Mary and such an extraordinary team. Strong visionary leaders rarely win popularity contests. Their work is challenged and criticized since it is focused on what is best for the students versus the adults in the system. It would be much easier for a superintendent to simply deal with managing the district. Luckily, Hudson is extremely fortunate to have a leader that is focused on the students of the district and has set us on a course of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
And Mr. Erikson?
Thank you. You know, talk a little bit about Mary's leadership as some of the others have done here tonight. We're just so fortunate as a district to have Mary as a superintendent. It's not about Mary, nor has it ever been about Mary. Mary's kept her focus on student learning and success. Mary's vision has always been aimed towards students and about creating systems to deliver and continuously improve the quality education they receive. Good leaders are committed to excellence. Mary has high enthusiasm and high expectations for all employees. We all contribute to student learning. The good thing is, success can be contagious, and it can be motivating, and I think you can see that in our employees. I've known Mary as a truly magnanimous leader. She's quick to give credit to others for the successes and is just as quick to accept sole responsibility for mistakes. Mary is always open to listen and often implements others' ideas and recognizes those people for those ideas on a consistent basis. Leadership is sometimes defined as a person's ability to get others to willingly follow. In the six years that I've worked with Mary, I have never known her to intimidate anyone or force her view on anyone. In fact, I have known the opposite. I witnessed Mary encouraging different points of view, and you've heard others mention that tonight, too. And again, we prepared these remarks in... And again, we prepared these remarks individually. This allows all options to be thoroughly vetted, ensuring the best solutions to be put forth for our students. People can sometimes be intimidated solely by the title of one's position, but I have not seen Mary use her position to intimidate anyone. If we talk about ethics and integrity, I have witnessed time and again Mary's consistent approach to leadership. Ethics and integrity play an integral role in her leadership. Mary strives for the highest ethical standards and expects the same from others, and should. This is the base for any great organization. The role of a superintendent includes bringing various parties together, supporting students, parents, employees, and taxpayers, many times with differing and competing opinions and objectives. It's a tough job. Mary has balanced this with increased student achievement and a concern for the taxpayer. And as evidence of this, the district, this district, is lowest in revenue raised per student of regular K-12 districts in the state. It is the lowest. Last year alone, I talked about the under levy projected to be $16 million for the 12-13 budget. Last year, we under levied about $12.9 million. Coupled with the results of increased student achievement, I think that's a big bang for the buck. I want to thank the board for allowing me to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
I endorse the remarks of all the others and want to address something that has not already been said. I have spent the majority of my professional career, nearly 30 years, in Hudson administrative positions, Student Services Director for many years, principal briefly, and now Human Resources Director. And I'm very grateful for this opportunity, care deeply about the district, and for the most part, am very proud of where we have been and where we are going. What I'm not proud of is what I've seen before, which can only be regarded as the undeserved vilification of a superintendent by a relatively small group of individuals. Such vilification has become more frequent and more vehement since Hudson citizens passed the referendum for the school district to purchase St. Croix Meadows Dog Track for a new secondary school. For these individuals, the end justifies the means. Lies and general disparagement of individual character is okay. You've already heard the other administrators defend against the accusations that Mary is dictatorial, intimidating, uncaring, unethical, et cetera. Some of this could be explained as a misunderstanding of leadership. You've heard the principals speak about leadership and leadership qualities, or by some a discomfort or a resistance to change. However, the criticism doesn't end there. Mary's been referred to as a criminal. Mary, two names and a bitch. I'll let you interpret what this is all about. In the future, with this history, who with outstanding qualifications would want to be a Hudson superintendent? The good people who elected you as board members must come forward to support the work of this board and this superintendent in order that we continue along the HSD 2025 path to educational greatness. Otherwise, this period of time may be looked upon historically as one of the greatest losses of opportunity this community and its school district has experienced. We wish to thank the board for its positive and future-oriented direction of the school district for the benefit of students and for its support of a truly outstanding superintendent, a superintendent who deserves, if not praise, then at least respect. President Holland and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity for members of the Hudson administrative team to be heard, and we hope that others are listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sweet, and thank you, administrators, as well as principals. Appreciate your comments. I'd like to just underline some things regarding this. And as always, I'm speaking to people that'll listen, and that is that I believe that the people that have spoken tonight, including Brian Huzer, have a selfish motivation. Their motivation is to maintain and retain the high quality of excellence that they've come under, under the leadership of Mary Bowen Eggbroten. I've now spent six years as a board member, coming in very green behind the ears and learning a lot, and very fortunate, frankly, to have been able to serve with such a leader as Mary. I'd also indicate to the community as a whole that we have a risk here. There's a risk. We've seen in other districts, I've seen in other districts, where these types of attacks come on, and the reason why I'm bringing it to the forefront tonight is because we stand to lose what we've gained over the last number of years that Mary's been here. Nancy Sweet asked, "Why would a superintendent want to be a superintendent in Hudson?" You can ask yourself that question when you hear this kind of attacks that we've heard. Why would board members want to serve? Why would administrators want to be in staff? Why would teachers want to teach in a district that always is under attack, being discredited and defamed? And that's not going to happen under my watch. As long as I sit here, I think our community and our kids are worth the fight. Comments?
Mr. President? I almost hesitate to speak after such eloquent remarks, but it's just wonderful. I've been actually traveling most of the past couple of weeks and just read the agenda just very briefly this afternoon, and so had no clue what to expect with regard to this item. I first want to thank those administrators and principals and representatives of the Teachers Union for coming forward. Your comments are significant. They're very timely. This has been a very challenging year, particularly for our superintendents. I really want to thank you. Your comments were wonderful. And my brief comment will just be that I've been on the Board of Education now nearly 12 years. The most significant vote, and the vote of which I am most proud, was seven years ago, voting to bring Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbroten to Hudson. She has and will continue to enjoy my full support.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Pat?
I, well, when I came on the board two years ago, talk about being green, but the things that will be, that have been talked about and stuff, was Mary taught me those. What we're talking about tonight are what is expected of a board member, what is there. I mean, you guys could have done that, but you don't have that time. You have your jobs. And I went through the schools, I met these awesome principals, and I want to thank the principals for taking this leadership from this board through Mary and doing your part, which it is a part. They are not sitting behind a desk and on a telephone or whatever. They are in classrooms. They are working, and that is what is coming from Mary, his direction. And I went through the school, the first year, two weeks before school was out, and these kids were engaged. Now, I went to school, and my kids talk about, you know, and I says, "We can afford air conditioning," and I think us all to afford air conditioning because it was 80 degrees outside, and those kids would not have been productive. You can't be productive when it's so hot. But those kids were engaged. They were learning. They were doing their science. They were doing math, and it was two weeks left of school. But they were enjoying it, and I was shocked. It was great. And I thank you, and you guys from every, I commented for the principals and the grade school came with their, the middle school, that was their effort that has been coming through, and you all received that award. And I thank you, and I congratulate you all.
Thank you, Pat. Brian?
Just a brief comment is, you know, I've had the good fortune throughout my career, whether it be at the U.S. Air Force Academy, flying F-16s in the U.S. Air Force through two successful high-tech companies, to see all kinds of leaders. And although Mary and I don't always agree with each other, I'm a complete advocate of her, and I think there's no one better that could guide our district right now. And also to my fellow board members is, you know, although we don't all agree together, is I am very appreciative of the time that you invest in this community. And not doing this to, you know, just to do backslapping, and I just want, you know, the community to know that, you know, we are here for a mission and that each of us have made personal sacrifices to be on the board, and we do it really with the interest of driving, driving, you know, this change forward that we want for our children, our graduates, and doing it respectful of the taxpayers and make sure that we have the right staff and the faculty and the right administration to do what we need to do. And we have, you know, we have opportunity for improvement, but we're one of the best school districts in the state with the lowest revenue per student. We have a lot to be proud of. And I want to hear where we're not doing well and keep pushing us forward, and I want to hear that from the community. But I also want to say publicly, you know, how much I stand behind the whole leadership team and behind Mary and my fellow board members.
Thank you, Brian. Lynn?
Mr. President, one of the things that I most appreciate about Mary, well, two of them. First stems from her ability to be a visionary leader. I think when Mary makes decisions or thinks through strategies, her thought process is always very well thought out. She thinks about how it'll affect the students, how it'll affect the community, how it'll affect the leadership team, how it affects everybody in the whole system. So she, I appreciate her thoughtfulness and how she thinks through her strategies, her decisions, her direction, and how it'll impact the whole system. And secondly, I appreciate that, Mary will argue with you. Mary and I have difference of opinions, and I appreciate the honesty and the constructive nature in debating issues and talking through how we'll move forward, because in the end, we all have to move forward together for our students.
Thank you, Lynn. Dan?
Mr. President, I'll jump in here as well. I wish I could say I was green on the board, but I'm not. But I've been around on this board long enough to see the dramatic changes that have taken place within the school district, and I think it's the administrative team, our great teaching staff, you know, it's great to hear comments coming from Brian about how we're working good together as an employer, employee relationship, which is really important to me. But we're headed in the right direction. I mean, this HSD 2025 is, you know, I'm almost, I don't want to say, but I hear about it so much when I walk in the doors of the school and the Administrative Service Center, that that really is the guiding force behind what we're doing. And I commend a lot of the remarks that have been said tonight, and I'm extremely proud of this school district. You know, seeing how my own kids have thrived in this school district is evidence of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mary, can you speak?
So this is what you've been doing in those meetings I don't know anything about and walk into every once in a while. So certainly, thank you for your comments. I feel we have a very gifted team that leads this district. As the people around this table know, sorry. I'm not very good at accepting praise, and I give it out quite a bit because of the people I get to work with in the team.
Can I say something?
Please.
Nothing else good.
Would this be a good time? I've seen Mary cry before, a couple of times, just a couple of times, and, but I would say, from what I've seen in the conversations I've had with her, she's not crying for herself. She's crying for the possibility of loss for the school district. That's what she's crying about.
So I, you know, as we move forward, and I appreciate the comments of Peg and Dan about our system for learning and what it does for our students, because it's about our students, and that's who we all advocate for, and that's who we're all working for. And it's worth fighting for. Hudson students are definitely worth fighting for. And it's not about me, even though for the last few minutes, it's been awful hard to have it be about me. But I appreciate all the comments, and I could do the same for each person that I see before me, board members as well, working with you. And we need to keep fighting for this district and for our students and our staff and working together. You know, when you're a leader, you don't make everybody happy. And it can't be about making everybody happy because it's not leadership. It has to be about our students first and our staff second, and this community certainly, but it is all about our students and helping them be successful as they move through the Hudson School District, but then as they graduate and go on to their next path. And so I appreciate and will continue to appreciate working with the people around this table, my colleagues over there, the teachers that Tess and Brian represent as well. We are a team working together, supporting our students, and we will continue to create that system of success that supports their efforts and helps our teachers grow and learn, administrators as well, so that we can be the very best for them. So thank you to everyone.
I know this has been a heavy meeting tonight, and I'll just make one final comment regarding this before we move on, and that is my, an appeal, an appeal to the community to stand Let's not let happen to this district what has happened with other districts, when these types of things have gone on. So, as I always say, for those who will listen, please stand up. Thank you. Moving on to, kind of staying in the same vein here, but legal issues that we've had to deal with and investigate, and we've asked our attorney, Mick Walzberger, to do some investigation and report his findings.
Mr. President?
Hi, Mick.
Should I have him report? Should I have him down?
It's up. It's up, yeah.
All right. And closer. Wow.
Pull the, pull the mic up. Pull the mic out, Mick.
Okay. First of all, you should know that every attorney is always uncomfortable not having his back to the wall. Just doesn't feel quite right. In June of 2012, Superintendent Mary Bowen Eggbroten asked Board President Tom Holland to authorize an investigation into a number of allegations that had been made against individuals in the district that had the real potential to harm the reputation of the district and employees of the district. Ms. Bowen Eggbroten specifically requested an independent and objective investigation. She stated if the allegations were true, she wanted to know what action should be taken, and if the allegations were not true, then of course, action did not need to be taken. I represent the board as a body. I do not represent any of you individually, and I certainly do not represent any individual employees of this district. President Tom Holland subsequently authorized me to conduct the investigation, again, into a variety of matters, and then to report my findings to the board, and that's my first order of business here tonight. I'm going to break down the investigations I've done into three general areas. The first involves Tracy Abishaline, and recently, a member of the community made the following allegations against Ms. Abishaline. One- One, that she applied for the job of communications specialist while still a school board member. Two, that a part-time communications specialist position was created, quote, "out of thin air just for her." Three, that she was not qualified for the job and that her primary work experience was that of a daycare provider or operator. And finally, that she is now a full-time employee but has the time to be the sole owner and operator and employee of Cove Country School, a daycare and school that she does own. The suggestion being that if she can run the school, she is certainly not working hard enough to be a full-time employee of the district. Those are the allegations. Here are my findings. Prior to July of 2007, the School District of Hudson hired independent contractors, including a private agency, to provide communication specialist services to the district. This is common practice in a number of school districts in most states in the country. And the district did this pursuant to written contracts or agreements with the agencies and independent contractors. In the spring of 2007, the Hudson School District decided not to renew its contract with its then-current agency that was providing those services and wanted to look for another person to provide them. Ms. Habish-Aline was operating a preschool on a part-time basis at that point in time and was looking for additional part-time work similar to work that she had performed in the past in the field of communication for the University of Minnesota and the State of Minnesota. Ms. Habish-Aline's education and previous experience in the area of communications included, but was not limited to the following. She first has a master's degree. She worked for the U of M writing curriculum and writing other matters in the field of communication. She also worked for the Minnesota Supreme Court, a very prestigious appointment, to rewrite guardian-at-later training materials and curriculum in regard to child development and abuse. She also provided trainings and child, to childcare developers and more significantly, trainings to attorneys and judges, which are not an easy audience, I can tell you. She spoke with the superintendent in the spring of 2007, Ms. Habish-Aline did, to let her know that she was interested in the communications specialist position. Mary Bowen-Eggerbrotten contacted me about that matter. Mary Bowen-Eggerbrotten told Ms. Habish-Aline that she would need to resign from the board before ever thinking about applying or before applying, that she would need to be interviewed like any other person. And Mary repeatedly reiterated that while Ms. Habish-Aline might resign from the board, there was absolutely no guarantee that she would be hired for that position. On June 19th, she attended her last board meeting. Ms. Habish-Aline resigned on that date at 9:00 P.M. Prior to resigning, she did not participate in any board discussions about her interest in the communications specialist position. She did not undertake any effort to influence or otherwise seek to have board members hire her. On June 20th, she submitted a written application, as did other individuals and agencies interested. She subsequently interviewed for the position. She was interviewed by Nancy Sweet and the high school principal, Ed Lucas. The board on July 10th voted to approve a contract for her whereby she would provide communication specialist services to the district as an independent contractor. Ms. Habish-Aline accepted a contract at an hourly rate that was significantly lower than the preceding contract for the same services. I asked her why she did that. She did it because she felt she was called to serve in this district. She wanted to serve in that manner. On July 11th, she began providing services as an independent contractor. As the duties of the position grew, her position was changed from that of independent contractor to a part-time employee. That was required by law. Ultimately, the position became a .75 full-time equivalent position. She then, most recently in the fall of 2012, went to full-time status. She's now working on a full-time basis as the district's communications coordinator and is responsible for additional job duties, including overseeing the community education program. She owns a daycare preschool called Cove Country School. That is true. She is the sole owner, but she is not the sole employee. She employs, excuse me, employs a teacher who is responsible for day-to-day operations of the school. She does not perform any work for or on behalf of Coventry Country School during her duty day. I have not found any impropriety whatsoever in the hiring of Ms. Habish-Aline. The position existed for a number of years before she assumed the role. She resigned before applying for it. She undertook no effort to influence anyone. She was hired on her merits based on her prior experience. She began at a lower hourly rate to the benefit of the district than the previous provider of the same services. And she's now full-time because she has significantly more duties that require full-time work, including oversight of community education. Again, she's not the sole employee of the school. She employs someone who runs that operation during her duty day. No violation of law or policy has occurred. The second matter I'm going to address arises out of comments that were made in letters to the editor. April Simmons served as a substitute teacher in the Hudson School District but was removed from the substitute teacher list. In a letter to the editor in Hudson Star Observer, Ms. Simmons suggested that she was fired, was her quote, because her spouse had spoken at a city council meeting. On June 14, 2012, Bob Simmons, her spouse, wrote a letter to the editor stating that Ms. Simmons was allegedly fired by the district's, quote, "vengeful human resources and superintendent" because he had spoken at a plan commission meeting. On the same date, Ms. Simmons wrote a second letter to the editor stating that she could file a lawsuit against the district and win. The district, of course, takes all allegations of retaliation seriously and investigates those allegations. And the superintendent and board president determined that an investigation was appropriate here. I want to be clear. Ms. Simmons made her allegations in a very public manner. In fairness to those who are alleged to have engaged in wrongdoing, this report is made during a public board meeting so the public is aware of exactly what did occur and what did not occur. The public interest and disclosure here certainly outweighs any privacy interests or harm that would occur from public disclosure. Before I get to my findings, I want to inform the board that I interviewed more than a dozen witnesses as part of this particular investigation. I also reviewed documents from the district's own internal earlier investigation into Ms. Simmons' conduct. I provided Ms. Simmons with written notice of the investigation and what's commonly referred to as a Waznicki notice and provided her with an opportunity to meet with me and tell her side of the story, but she declined to do so. Here are my findings. Ms. Simmons began subbing for the Hudson School District in late 2010. In April of 2012, multiple staff members made complaints to their building principal about Ms. Simmons. The basic complaints were as follows. She did not follow lesson plans and directions fully. The students in her charge were excessively loud and not on task. The students in her charge did not demonstrate learning from the substitute teaching she provided, and there was actually post-testing done to verify that. She did not keep students with whom she was supposed to work in a separate setting for the scheduled length of time, but rather sent them back early and then had that time where she was not performing any duties. Her notes of how her day went and the services she provided as a substitute were inconsistent with the reports that other staff members made about how the day actually did go in terms of student behavior. The building principal asked the HR department to remove Ms. Simmons from the substitute teacher list from that particular building based on the complaints that were received. On April 16th, 2012, the district's HR manager, Deborah Weisert, left a voicemail message for Ms. Simmons stating that she needed to meet with her regarding an issue with her work as a substitute, and she would not receive additional substitute teaching assignments until Ms. Weisert had completed her investigation, which included speaking with Ms. Simmons. This is standard operating procedure in the Hudson School District and is actually part of a written manual that you have for guest teachers. On April 16th, Ms. Simmons was substituting for a different teacher at a building in the district. After receiving Ms. Weisert's voicemail message on that day, she left her work assignment and traveled to the Administrative Service Center to confront Ms. Weisert. Ms. Simmons did not receive permission to leave her assignment or the building and did not schedule an appointment with Ms. Weisert in advance. School policy prohibits leaving the work site without permission as a guest teacher. Also, the guest teacher handbook, which she received, states the teachers must adhere to the time schedule of building in which they work and are on call for the time period that they're scheduled. Similarly, during orientation, as a guest teacher, Ms. Simmons was told she must remain on duty and on-site for the entire period of time she was substituting. When she arrived to speak with Ms. Weisert, Ms. Simmons was visibly upset. Ms. Weisert, at the time, was interviewing other staff and could only meet briefly with Ms. Simmons. This upset her even more. After leaving the Administrative Service Center, Ms. Simmons went back to the building where she was substituting and then confronted a teacher whom Ms. Simmons believed to have reported or made a complaint about her. Ms. Simmons not only confronted the teacher, which is an act of retaliation, but she confronted the teacher in the presence of young students. Pursuant to standard operating procedure, Ms. Weisert subsequently conducted an investigation, which included interviewing various staff members and reviewing documentation, including prior complaints about classroom management stemming back to a year earlier. The complaints were consistent with current complaints, including not following lesson plans or directions, and also complaints of spending time on the computer rather than working, and another report that she was inconsistent in how she was reporting her day went versus how the other staff reported it. And then finally, also a complaint that she was knitting when she was to be working with students. On April 24, 2012, Ms. Weisert met with Ms. Simmons, gave her an opportunity to respond and shared the results of her investigation. At that time, Ms. Simmons admitted she was knitting in class on one occasion but denied the other occasions. Ms. Weisert respectfully informed Ms. Simmons she would be deactivated from the substitute teacher list. Prior to speaking with Ms. Simmons, Ms. Weisert consulted with Nancy Sweet, the district's deputy director and director of human resources. Ms. Sweet did not have any direct contact with Ms. Simmons until June of 2012, when she came in to review some personnel records. Superintendent Mary Bowen-Eggerbrotten vilified part of the newspaper article that she was vengeful. She didn't participate in the decision whatsoever to deactivate Ms. Simmons from the substitute teacher list. On April 24, neither Ms. Weisert nor Ms. Sweet were aware that Ms. Simmons' spouse had ever spoken at a city council meeting or a plan commission meeting. Their first awareness of that claim came after reading Mr. Simmons or Ms. Simmons' letter to the editor. After she was moved from the substitute teacher list, Ms. Simmons asked a child to circulate a petition among other children in the school in an effort to be reinstated. Such conduct also violates district policy. I have found no evidence to suggest that any staff member was rude or disrespectful to Ms. Simmons. My conclusions are that Ms. Simmons was not fired. She was simply removed from the substitute teacher list. She was removed from the substitute teacher list based on teacher complaints and the results of the district's own investigation, certainly legitimate, non-retaliatory reasons. Ms. Simmons engaged in inappropriate conduct by confronting a teacher, particularly in the presence of young children, based on her belief that the teacher made a complaint about her. Ms. Simmons engaged in inappropriate and unprofessional conduct by angrily confronting Deb Weisert in response to the voicemail message that was left. She engaged in inappropriate conduct and violated the handbook and expectations for guest teachers by leaving her work site. She received full pay for that day, even though she was not on the job full day. She violated numerous expectations for guest teachers. I have found simply no evidence to support the allegation that she was deactivated from the list because of any statement her spouse made. And those statements, in my opinion, had no impact whatsoever on the decision to deactivate her. And that completes that second part.
I'll pause at this point, Mick, give you a chance to take a drink. And also ask any of the board members, do they have any questions or any comments regarding the first two allegations and findings?
Thank you. Third part of my investigation involves Board Member Sandy Gurkey. And an employee of the district recently reported a conversation that occurred with Board Member Gurkey, and the report raised several concerns. I will not be using the employee's name or any other identifying information about that employee, and I caution board members to do the same. Unlike Ms. Simmons, who chose to make her claims public, the employee in this instance has no interest in being publicly identified. Based on the employee's report, Ms. Gurkey allegedly did the following. These are the allegations. I'll get to the findings in a moment. The allegations are that she contacted the employee about a personnel matter, which would be a violation of district policy. Second allegation is that Ms. Gurkey indicated to the employee that she was acting as a board member to the point where the employee believed she was required to respond to Ms. Gurkey's questions and thought she was her boss. Third allegation is that Ms. Gurkey told the employee that she was looking into whether the administration had told her the truth or had lied to her. Fourth allegation is that Ms. Gurkey made false statements to the employee in a manner that made it appear as though the administration had been untruthful to the employee. Fifth allegation is that Ms. Gurkey made statements that compromised and undermined the administration, which again would be a violation of district policy. The next allegation is that Ms. Gurkey implied that the employee should not inform anyone about the conversation and that the employee's supervisor would be unhappy if she knew that Ms. Gurkey had contacted the employee. And then finally, the allegation is that Ms. Gurkey's conversation with the employee was so upsetting that the employee lost a significant amount of sleep. Those are merely the allegations. Here are my findings. As part of the investigation, I want you to know that I met with Ms. Gurkey and gave her an opportunity to respond, and she did avail herself of that opportunity. And I think we had a good meeting, productive meeting. Here are my findings. One, Ms. Gurkey did contact an employee directly about a personnel matter. Ms. Gurkey stated that she contacted the employee as an acquaintance and not as an employee. However, she acknowledges that the question she asked, the employee related almost exclusively to the employee's job. Ms. Gurkey stated that in hindsight, she should not have called the employee because she was, in fact, an employee. Ms. Gurkey looked at board policies after she spoke and with the employee about a personnel matter and concluded that she, on her own, that she should not have called the employee. She states, Ms. Gurkey does, that this was the first time and will be the last time she ever contacts an employee about a personnel matter. Second finding, Ms. Gurkey did hold herself out as a board member when she spoke with the employee. She mentioned that she was recently elected to the board and was on the personnel committee. Ms. Gurkey acknowledges she told the employee during the conversation that she was on the personnel committee and only board members are on the personnel committee. The employee, moreover, recalls that Ms. Gurkey also stated she was recently elected to the board. Ms. Gurkey states she doesn't remember saying this, but she doesn't dispute that she said it either. The employee believed that she was required to answer Ms. Gurkey's questions as a board member and that Ms. Gurkey was, in fact, her boss. Ms. Gurkey did not tell her otherwise. The conversation lasted 25 minutes. Ms. Gurkey stated that if the employee viewed her as the ultimate boss, that could explain why the conversation caused the employee stress and a lack of sleep. Next finding is that Ms. Gurkey told the employee that a lot of people had called her with issues about the administration. Ms. Gurkey acknowledges making a statement to that effect, and making a statement to that effect does certainly undermine and compromise the administration. Ms. Gurkey, the next finding is that she stated to the employee that she would be happy to take on the employee's cause if the employee felt he or she was treated unfairly. I want you to know that Ms. Gurkey adamantly denies making this statement and states that she understands board members do not have this type of power. Ms. Gurkey also stated, however, that the employee does not have a motivation to lie or fabricate information. And the reason why I have substantiated this finding is shortly after the conversation, the employee wrote notes of her conversation with Ms. Gurkey and documented very clearly that Ms. Gurkey had made that statement and was unequivocal in my meeting that the statement had been made. The next finding is that Ms. Gurkey told the employee she was looking into whether the administration told her the truth at a personnel committee meeting. Ms. Gurkey acknowledges making this statement. The statement undermines and compromises the authority of the administration, which supervises the employee, and Ms. Gurkey acknowledges this in hindsight. Ms. Gurkey states that she made an error in judgment by making that statement to an employee. Ms. Gurkey's statement to the employee, in my opinion, shows that she was conducting an investigation into a personnel matter on her own, which would be a violation of district policy. Now to some of the more serious allegations, not that those are not serious. Ms. Gurkey falsely stated to the employee that she did not know who would be performing a particular job function for the district because the administration had not given her any names. Why is that such a big deal? It's a big deal because by falsely making that statement to the employee, Ms. Gurkey was indicating that the administration had lied to the employee. The employee in question specifically stated that Ms. Gurkey told her she did not know who would be performing the job function because she was not given any names by the administration. She documented that again. The employee told Ms. Gurkey the name of the person who would be performing the job duty in question, and she's absolutely certain of that. According to the employee, Ms. Gurkey then expressed surprise and indicated the administration never shared the information with her. When I interviewed Ms. Gurkey, she initially stated that even as of July 9th, she still did not know who would be performing that job function. Ms. Gurkey subsequently stated that she did not recall the employee had shared the name with her, but she then said she would not deny that it had been shared with her. Ms. Gurkey is on the personnel committee as well as the board, as you know. The evidence shows that Nancy Sweet, district deputy director, twice informed Ms. Gurkey the name of the person who would be performing the job duty in question. The administration also gave Ms. Gurkey documentation showing who would be performing the job duty. Ms. Gurkey does not deny receiving the documentation, but she does not recall receiving it. The evidence shows she did, in fact, receive it. Ms. Gurkey does not dispute the appropriateness of the administration, excuse me, the administration's action in assigning the job duties. She stated that it's up to the administration to do so. So that's not a matter that's in question. Ms. Gurkey also falsely stated to the employee that she was not aware the school district was doing a comparability study on wages. This again had the effect of making it seem to the employee as if the administration had lied to the employee about doing a comparability study on her particular wages. The employee states that she told Ms. Gurkey that she was waiting for the results of the comparability study and that Ms. Gurkey responded by saying she wasn't aware of the study at all. When I interviewed Ms. Gurkey, she stated that she did not recall the employee mentioning a comparability study and she was not aware of that study. She subsequently stated that she has so much going on, she just cannot keep it all in her head. The evidence shows that Ms. Gurkey received at least two written documents from the administration indicating that a comparability study was being performed. Next finding is that Ms. Gurkey told the employee she would not keep, that she would keep the conversation in confidence and the employee may, excuse me, and the district may not be happy with her if it found out she was calling the employee. Ms. Gurkey acknowledges she told the employee anything she said would be confidential. And Ms. Gurkey explained that she said this because she believes the employee said things that the employee would not want repeated. Ms. Gurkey does not recall if she said the district would be unhappy, but she does not deny the employee's statement that she said that. Here are my conclusions. that the employee would not want repeated. Ms. Gurkey does not recall if she said the district would be unhappy, but she does not deny the employee's statement that she said that. Here are my conclusions. Ms. Gurkey first violated the following provisions of Board Policy 2200, which is the board superintendent relationship. The policy states that board members shall act only upon the recommendation of the superintendent in matters of employment or dismissal of school personnel. Policy 2200 was also violated in the provision that states that board members shall refer all complaints to the superintendent and discuss them only at a regular meeting after failure of administrative solution. She obviously did not do so. Policy 2200 also states that board members shall present personal criticisms of any employee directly to the superintendent. Again, that did not occur. Conclusion number two. By contacting an employee about a personnel matter, Ms. Gurkey violated the following provision of Board Policy 2300, Board Staff Communications. Quote, "All official communications, policies, and directives of staff, interest, and concern will be communicated to staff members through the superintendent." Conclusion number three. Ms. Gurkey violated the following provision of Board Policy 7800, School Board Expectations and Ethics. The policy states that board members will strive to improve public education and will, number one, remember that the responsibilities for day-to-day operation of schools belong to the administration; number two, communicate to other board members and superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and programs; three, refrain from using any board position for personal or partisan gain; and finally, take no action, private action, that will compromise the board or administration," and that certainly, in my opinion, was done here. Next conclusion. Ms. Gurkey acted in excess of her lawful authority as a board member by violating district policies. Conclusion number five. Ms. Gurkey disregarded the training and legal advice that I provided to the board on May 19, 2012. You'll recall that during the training session that I provided, I gave you written materials and laid out the proper steps for a board member to take when he or she receives a complaint from a citizen. Ms. Gurkey did not follow any of those steps. During the training session, I provided a list of seven things that board members should never do in response to a complaint or concern expressed by a citizen. Ms. Gurkey did at least six of the things on that list that board members should never do. Such conduct is very troubling and suggests, in my opinion, a disregard for the district's interests and the interests of its employees. During the training session, I emphasized to all the board members the importance of not investigating on your own as a board member and the problems that that can create. These problems include, and I explain these in detail. One, you can create legal liability for the district if you investigate on your own. Two, you can impair the integrity of an existing investigation or a future investigation. Three, you are typically acting, when you're investigating on your own, without full knowledge of the facts and may be undermining the work of the administration, which may also be investigating. Four, it results in conflicting messages to complainants. Five, it's not in compliance with district policies or applicable laws regarding investigations. It also places employees in an untenable situation and creates undue stress, which is exactly the situation that occurred here, to the point where the employee lost several nights of sleep. I'd also mention to you, as I did during the training, that grievances sometimes come before this board, and if you're out there investigating on your own, you are going to be deemed to be biased, unable and unable to hear the grievance. And finally, it's simply not the proper role of any board member to engage in personal investigation of such matters. I want to emphasize a point to you, too. This is extremely unusual conduct. As most of you know, I've been representing school districts for roughly 17 years or so now. I work for a firm that represents over half the Minnesota school districts. I represent districts in Wisconsin as well. I personally, at any given time, am representing over more than 30 districts. I have appeared in front of countless school boards over the years on a variety of matters. I cannot think of another time in my career where I'm aware of a board member that's ever personally investigated a personnel matter like this one. Perhaps most concerning to me, though, are Ms. Gurkey's false statements to the employee in which she claimed that she did not know who would be performing a job function and that she did not know about a comparability study. The evidence shows, in my opinion, that Ms. Gurkey clearly knew or should have known of the person who was assigned to perform the job duties and about the comparability study. She was informed verbally and had documentation to that effect. Ms. Gurkey's false statements to the employee, again, had the effect of suggesting to the employee that the administration, her direct supervisor, had lied to the employee. Ms. Gurkey's statements to the employee must be considered against the backdrop of her willful violation of policies. She was aware of those policies. One thing I will say, well, there's certainly positives. One of the very positive things about Ms. Gurkey that I will tell you, and I believe that she is intelligent, and I believe that she knows her policies. When I met with her, she brought her policy book with her. She was clear in noting that she had underlined the policies. She's sharp, and she's familiar with the policies of the district. And given that, I believe that she willfully violated those. She knew what they prohibited, and she went forward anyway. She, against the backdrop of that and the fact that she told the employee that a lot of people had called her with issues about the administration, the fact that she told the employee that she was looking into whether the administration had been truthful, suggesting the administration may have lied to her, when I look at those factors and consider the totality of the circumstances, one could readily conclude that Ms. Gurkey's actions were part of an intentional course of action designed to undermine the administration. Ironically, while Ms. Gurkey clearly, in my view, does not trust the administration, she is engaged in conduct which raises questions about whether she can be trusted. When I met with Ms. Gurkey, she indicated that she was fairly new to the board and did not immediately realize her errors, although she acknowledged some of them in hindsight, and I do appreciate the acknowledgement and hindsight. At this point in time, unlike the other investigations, you have a situation where allegations have been substantiated, and that means that typically some level of action is appropriate. I'd like to briefly provide you with some options and then allow you to have some discussion. The options that I believe are available to the board at this time include the following. One, board members could simply express disapproval of her actions through statements at this board meeting. Two, at a future board meeting, the board could take action to censure Ms. Gurkey. Three, at a future board meeting, the board could take action to disavow Ms. Gurkey's conduct. Four, the board could revise existing policies to add more teeth and consequences. I want to really be clear here that the only action you can take at this board meeting is to express disapproval. Any of the other actions would need to be noticed pursuant to the open meeting law and would need to occur during another meeting. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have, and then also turn it back to the board president.
Questions? Pat?
Mr. President, may I continue to say against the board policy, number this, number that? That is a state board policy. That just isn't ours, is it?
No, policies are adopted locally by the local school district. So that is yours. Your board policies, however, and particularly your policy on ethics and board member conduct is modeled after the national school board policy. I would submit to you that the vast majority of school districts in the state of Minnesota have either identical or very similar policies.
Questions? Pat? Brian?
Mr. President, for the actions, you mentioned several options there. The disavow, could you explain the, I don't know if it's appropriate, this session, as you brought up, the disavow versus the censure. Could you elaborate on those two actions?
Excellent question. Censure is essentially the equivalent of a public reprimand, where you say to somebody, you did something, we don't like it, don't do it again. Disavowment is a little higher level. Disavowment is saying, you did something knowing it was wrong, and we're going to wash our hands of you and the whole thing, so that in the event the school district ever gets sued, we're going to hang you out and say, you're on your own for personal liability. We're not with you on this, and the district's not responsible to either indemnify you or defend you. That's kind of the practical effect that it can have, depending on the circumstances. So disavow is very similar, but it's just a little higher level of saying, we're distancing ourselves from what you did.
Is that, if you had laid out a continuum of actions, would that be the most strenuous or the highest level of action? Would it be appropriate at this particular juncture?
I believe that that would be the highest level of action appropriate at this particular juncture. Removal is the highest level of action that can be taken with a board member. I do not believe that the actions of Ms. Gurkey at this point warrant removal.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. President? Yes. I guess my question is probably similar to Mr. Bell's. So I guess I'll just put it directly. Would you suggest that the district may be subject to a given level of liability, that disavowment would perhaps be a recommendation?
I am not recommending disavowment at this point in time. I do not think that Ms. Gurkey's actions in this particular case necessarily create legal liability. They have the serious potential to do that and could have done quite a bit more damage. The primary damage done here, though, is real consternation and stress for an employee and causing an employee then to question, who's telling me the truth? Here I have a board member who the employee views as her ultimate boss, suggesting that the administration has repeatedly lied to her, when in fact, the administration was honest and provided the information and followed through on the things it said it was going to follow through on. So that's my biggest concern, but I'm not recommending disavowment here.
Thank you.
Comments? Lynn?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then a recommendation based on Mr. Walzberger's findings he presented. I guess my biggest issue is that I'm concerned about the impact to the organization when a board member acts outside of board policy and outside of the advice of its own attorneys. As Mr. Walzberger mentioned, the board did have a work session that outlined the parameters of how the school board should operate and the policies that further dictate and guide those communications and actions. I'm further concerned that the actions described by Mr. Walzberger undermine the authority of the administration in dealing with their employee and their authority to make decisions, and that relationship with the employee, I believe, was compromised as a result of that interaction. In light of Mr. Holland's comments earlier and in response to the findings, I guess I would like to come back and have the, recommend to the board that we revisit the language in the board policies in question and make sure that there's consequences in place that would hold board members accountable if any of those policies would be violated in the future. Some of other board members concur. I guess I would ask Mr. Walzberger to speak out on how that would work.
We'd follow your, excuse me, in terms of the policies, I would make some recommended changes to those and submit them to you for your consideration review in accordance with your ordinary policy review framework. And as I sit here, I'm not familiar with the timelines for that framework, but I could certainly turn those around in pretty short order for you.
Other board members?
I have something I'd like to say. First of all, Mr. Walzberger has failed to tell you some of the things that I told him. I did not intentionally lie to this person. I believe Mr. Walzberger is aware of that. I'd like to make a point regarding the presentation as it pertains to me. For one thing, I did not know that this was going to happen tonight. I just met with Mr. Walzberger yesterday morning. So this is very quick in hanging me out to dry here. Had I known that this was going to happen, I would have, could have come with a better prepared response, but I was not informed of this. I object to what he's saying because any issues of the board or the administration has with my alleged actions, I believe this is a violation of the open meetings law in that you did not notice that you were going to be discussing me. I read what the Attorney General's Office has ruled about notification and putting something in the paper and out there for the public, and it basically says that the, a good rule of thumb will be to ask whether a person interested in a specific subject would be aware upon reading the notice that the subject might be discussed. Well, I would propose to you that without, with such a general notice in the agenda, nobody in the public would know that this type of thing was going to be discussed tonight. So I object to the discussion of it under those terms, and I believe it's a violation of the open meeting law. The other question I would have is when I met with you yesterday, I asked, under whose authority would an investigation like this of a school board member be started? And you mentioned it was the president's, Mr. Holland's, direction that you did this. But I checked through all of the board information that I'd been given, and I can't find any place where it says that that is the process when a complaint is made against a school board member. So I would object to this under those terms. I was elected to the board to represent the public, to ask questions, to try to create some transparency, and that's what I'm doing. I think that you failed to mention to these people that the person that I called is a personal acquaintance of mine. It's not as if she were someone right out of the blue, and I did not know her. And when I called her, I called her as an acquaintance, not as a school board member, though, as you pointed out to me, the opposite was true. And I admitted that I shouldn't have called her when I realized that she assumed I was calling as a board, as a board member. You've painted the picture unlike what I told you, some of the things that I told you. And I will leave it at that because I do not want to hang this person out to dry.
Mr. President, could I respond briefly?
Yes.
First of all, you are correct in that my findings do not all reflect exactly what you said. That's because I have rejected as being not credible some of the statements that you made to me. I found them not to be credible because they conflicted with the statements that the employee made to me, which were documented almost contemporaneously by the employee. So it is true that not everything you said to me was a finding that I made. I did take into consideration, however, everything that you said. I will fully state to you that you denied intentionally lying. What I'm saying here to this board is that I believe that you knew or should have known most clearly that the statements you made to that employee were false, and it is beyond my ability to fathom how you were not aware of that information when you were informed of it verbally and when you received written documentation, unless you are not reading documentation that you provided as a board member. And I have found you to be very studious and intelligent, and I reject the conclusion, thus, that you somehow just decided not to read the documents you were provided. When we met, you did tell me at the end of the interview, and I appreciated that, that you had, you felt like you had a full and fair opportunity to respond. In terms of the violation of the open meeting law, of course, I disagree with you. I have reviewed the agenda, and the agenda specifically states, and I will, I will look at the language and read it for you here directly, findings from Attorney Mick Walzberger's independent investigation into allegations against district officials. You are indeed a district official. The public was on reasonable and fair notice. Also, when we met, you did ask me under whose authority the investigation was conducted, and I very specifically told you it was under the authority of the board president. You also asked, was there a specific policy that says that? And I was very upfront with you and said, no, there is not. It is a longstanding practice and protocol in this district, and the board president has a variety of powers that are not necessarily documented in policies that you could pull out. But I did also tell you that I thought it certainly fell within the umbrella of his powers by law and certainly by practice and protocol. And finally, I wanted to say that I did mention at the outset that you said that you contacted that individual as an acquaintance, but certainly, I don't think that that excuses the conduct in question.
Any comments? I'd just like to speak to the policy and the roles and responsibilities of the board, and why this is a serious matter. And I think it's important because I think there's a, there's a number of our community members that believe that we have a different role than really is called for as board members. We have the responsibility to give direction in this district. I think in our board session on, on June 19, Mick described it as, in the car, we get to tell the superintendent where we're going, but she has to drive it. She drives the car. That's probably the best analogy that I think I've heard regarding a simplification of the roles of the board and the roles of staff and our superintendent. The challenge that we have with this is that, as you can see, it creates anxiety and dysfunction among staff. We've had a staff member who's lost four nights of sleep because she wasn't sure what authority she should be listening to, things like that. And so you can see, then, that, how this creates problems. I've said oftentimes that we, as board members, have one staff member. We hire one person. We relate to one person, and that is our superintendent of schools. All of the staff below her are hers, not ours. It's not our responsibility or within our authority to intervene in those cases. I not only speak to this because I've, I've been a board member for six years, which doesn't say much, but this is the practice that is common in any, many, or most organizations that have boards, including the organization that I spent 30 years with. And there's a reason for that, because it creates dysfunction, it compromises the authority of our, of our superintendent in this case. of our superintendent in this case and our staff. And again, it's another item that potentially can bring down a district, and that's something that we feel very strongly about protecting. Second comment I'd like to make is that bringing this in the public is not a preferred approach for us. But I'll just remind you or inform you that we have been under -- being accused of mishandling or making -- taking action that is -- has been -- is false. And so, we felt, and I felt, and this is my decision to make this public tonight, that we needed to bring it to the public so that we could assure hopefully ourselves and to the public that we're dealing with this in a manner which is fair and above board. Again, whether in any of the cases that have been cited tonight, it's not our preference, but the situation that we have currently calls for it.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Brian.
Just like to make one statement, Mr. President, is I take exception to the statements that -- about being elected to the board to provide transparency. I believe we all have been elected to the board to provide transparency, and I think that violating ethics or violating school board policy to be transparent is a -- is not the correct approach. And I'm vehemently opposed to it, and I think it's the wrong approach, and I think we, as a board, should take action.
Mr. President? First of all, I want to thank you as board president for conducting this investigation. I think it was absolutely necessary. I want to say directly to Ms. Gurkey, if I could, to my personal disappointment, I've been in this board a number of years and have had quite a crew of folks up at this table on the Board of Education, and they've all been here for the benefit of the district and our students.
Mark, can I just ask you to just speak to me?
Oh, sure, okay. And I guess I just want to say that, you know, we all have a different political beliefs, I suppose, and I guess it's my hope that as moving forward, that whatever agenda was brought to the board, you know, can be set aside and that we can work together for the benefit of our students. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any else?
Certainly.
I already told you and Mr. Walzberger that in hindsight, I would not have made the call again. I also told you that I have never called any other person in this district. When the inspection -- or the investigation was ordered, I wondered why you didn't just call me in and tell me that a complaint had been made and discuss it with me instead of ordering this formal investigation and then making this public report. But the fact is that you -- this is what you did. You ordered a formal investigation on one complaint, and now there's this formal public report. I don't -- I think that that was an incorrect way for you to handle this, but you handled it this way, and I'm sure the rest of the board members are glad you did.
Okay. I think we're -- I think we've concluded this. Mick, your turn.
If I could make some -- a recommendation, and I want to follow up and track on the recommendation that Ms. Robson made. She was, as I understood her, stating that she believed it would be best to address this through changes to policy and through expressing disapproval of Board Member Gurkey's actions at this meeting, and I want to tell you that I disagree with that. I think you have the power to do more. Sometimes wisdom is not exercising power. You have the power to censure, but if you do that, it's going to drag this issue out longer and extend it, and it's going to keep you from what you want to do, which is move forward. I think that expressing disapproval, and it's been publicly addressed here, now's the time to move forward. I do think Board Member Gurkey has some strengths. I've mentioned some of those. I think she's studious, intelligent, and I would hope that these types of situations would not occur in the future. She has indicated that she's acknowledged some wrongdoing, not fully what I have found, but some. But I do believe that, as Board Member Robson said, the best approach here would be to address this through expressing your views at this meeting, then addressing it through policies later, and then simply moving forward. Because if you're going to look at censure or disavowment or other action, those are things that are going to occur in a future meeting. You're going to become mired in debate and argument over that, again, continuing to take the focus away from student learning, which is where we should be focused.
And that's -- and I would advocate for that same recommendation that Lynn has indicated, and I think we've got the same from the board. So, it's not an actionable matter, so we'll take that under advisement.
So, what are we doing? What are you doing to me?
It's not an actionable matter. Do you want to explain this, Mick?
My recommendation was that simply that board members, if they have any further expression of disapproval of your actions, that they do it at this meeting and that the matter then be considered closed, except for that the board would look at revising policies prospectively in the future and that we'd all move together forward, hopefully on the same page, to get the work of the district done.
A censure would be similar to what you went through in Farmington?
A censure is what occurred in Farmington. That was a public censure based on a hundred and some-page investigation report, yes.
And this investigation doesn't warrant that?
I'm not recommending that. I believe the board has the authority to issue a censure because violations of policy occurred, but that's not my recommendation.
Would a censure mean that I'd have to keep quiet at all meetings?
No, that's a different pronunciation of the word "censure." That's where you'd be censored. Censure is essentially a public reprimand where the board would adopt a formal resolution identifying each of the areas in which you had acted inappropriately, would debate the resolution, would formally pass the resolution, would create that resolution and place it into the school district records for permanency.
All right, so this is not a censure, correct?
That is correct. No censure has occurred. There's been no resolution to censure you or no action to censure you.
Okay.
As of this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're concluded now. Thank you, Mick.
Do you want me to proceed to the next item for my
Please.
work here? I've been asked to provide some legal opinions on some of the issues that have come up here recently in your district, and I'm going to try to do some of them pretty summarily and others I'll spend a little bit more time on. There have been some questions that have come up recently in terms of open enrollment and the open enrollment law, and there's even been a suggestion that the district should just ignore the law and run the risk that folks will appeal because we'd be better off if we did that rather than complying with the law. I'm here to tell you that you can't do that. If you simply ignore your policy or the law, what will happen is that DPI will find that you acted arbitrarily and capriciously, and the end result can certainly be, then, that every single application for open enrollment can be granted if you just simply disregarded your policy or the law. That would be a very tough thing for this district to swallow. Another suggestion that occurred at a recent board meeting was that the district should not accept open enrollment students into any grade level regardless of current space available in that grade level because there might not be space available in the future. So, for example, we wouldn't want to accept elementary-age students because when they get to the middle school, we're not going to have space available. You simply cannot do that under the open enrollment law statute. You're required to accept open enrollment applications for grade levels and school buildings that are not yet over capacity. If the elementary school has space, you have to accept them there. You have some safeguards in place. You can require students, and by policy you do, to reapply. So, for example, when they get to the middle school level, and you can limit your size constraints that way. Also, I note that the district has effectively closed open enrollment in the middle school because both grade levels in the school and the school as a whole are over capacity. However, there is a statutory exception to that, of course, you need to be aware of, which is that preference must still be given to those currently attending the school or to the siblings of those currently attending. So, I won't belabor the point, but really, the risk of a complete disregard of the policy is fairly high in terms of the potential consequences to you. And of course, as your attorney, I could never advise you to simply ignore any law.
May I comment on the open enrollment issue? Or do you prefer him to finish first?
I'd rather that you finish and then open for questions.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The second matter I was going to comment on briefly, and I'm not going to spend much time on it because Board President Holland already addressed it, is the proper function and role of the superintendent vis-à-vis the board. There have been a number of questions raised in either records requests or otherwise about the authority of the superintendent to make various decisions. Essentially, the superintendent is responsible for the day-to-day operations of your school district. She is your CEO, and she has broad, broad authority under that. You can, as Mr. Holland said, identify the destination on the roadmap. She gets to figure out how she's going to drive there and the direction she's going to take, the road she's going to take to get to that destination. And you do have a board policy, Board Policy 2200, which clarifies your board-superintendent relationship, and that really does outline what the role of the superintendent is and does give her that very broad authority. So, for example, strategic decisions, decisions of what the district is going to do when, unless they're at the policy level or the board has said that it's going to preempt the field and make those decisions, those fall within the umbrella of authority of the superintendent. Next area I've been asked to address is a question in regard to the referendum. In a recent letter to the editor, a citizen alleged that amending the original offer to purchase the St. Croix Metals property would require another referendum; otherwise, the purchase would be void, according to the citizen. That simply is not true and demonstrates a misunderstanding of the entire process. The referendum ballot language was as follows. It was an initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $8,250,000, and then it went on to say, "Therefore, be it resolved." The bond referendum and the purchase agreement are two separate issues. The referendum was a vote to approve the issuance of bonds to raise money for the purchase of the Dog Track. It was not a vote on the terms of the purchase agreement, which was already entered into. The voters only voted on the issuance of debt. The board approves the content of purchase agreements. The purchase agreement, if amended, would remain a valid, enforceable contract between buyer and seller. Likewise, the fact that the purchase agreement might be amended to modify the closing date or was has no impact on the validity of that agreement. All right. I want to move forward here and address conflict of interest. We've heard quite a few allegations in terms of conflict of interest. A number of community members have asserted that any board member who owns commercial real estate in Hudson has a conflict of interest in the purchase of the St. Croix Metals Dog Track property because, they argue, the purchase of that property will increase the value of the remaining commercial property in Hudson. Simply not true. As you may know, I provided a formal legal opinion about whether the two board members who own commercial property in the city, Sandy Gurkey and Lynn Robson, have a conflict of interest. If one has a conflict, they both do. I can say to you with absolute confidence, my legal and professional opinion is that no conflict of interest exists. Numerous factors can affect the value of commercial real estate. It would be speculative at best to assume that all commercial property, real estate in the city, will increase in value simply because a portion was put to an educational use. An interest that could arise from owning commercial property in Hudson would be far too attenuated and speculative, excuse me, to create a conflict in the eyes of the law. For the same reason, a board member who owns any commercial property in Hudson or is a partner in a company that owns any property does not violate the code of ethics for local public officials by voting on purchase agreements. If the law were otherwise, I would submit to you, then every member of this board would have a conflict of interest and every member of your community because the potential exists for every resident of your community to benefit from the increased economic development and increased home values that may result from a secondary school being built on the St. Croix Metals site. I next want to address the issue of defamatory statements. A number of employees and board members have inquired about what is necessary to bring a defamation action. To recover for defamation, a plaintiff must prove that the defendant made a false statement to someone other than the plaintiff and that the statement harmed the plaintiff's reputation and lowered him or her and the estimation of the community. If you're a public figure like a board member, the plaintiff also has to prove that the defendant acted with actual malice, meaning the defendant knew the statement was false or acted with reckless disregard for the truth. This is a situation where I would certainly support taking an aggressive approach. Mr. Holland said under his watch, "Certain things have to stop," and I agree with that. The kinds of blatantly false statements that have been uttered in your community need to come to an end, and the board should, to the extent permitted by law, I believe, support any action it can by individual board members or employees vis-à-vis people who defame and act as if they have a license to harm with their words. I also want to take just a moment to address the claim that was made that the restrictions imposed by Mr. Holland, which are simply consistent with your existing policy, are somehow violative of the First Amendment. They're not. They are absolutely consistent with the First Amendment, and such restrictions have been upheld by courts. Finally, my last order of business before you is just to make a response to any other unfounded statements and rumors. I'm going to just limit my comments to tell you again that I do represent more than 30 school districts at any one time. I have had the privilege of appearing in front of numerous, numerous boards. I have had the privilege of having great experience with districts. The negativity that is being spread by a small group of individuals in your district is incredibly destructive. If left unchecked, I do believe it will cause long-term damage to the progress your district has made over the years, and I believe that this is bigger than any one person. Boards are perpetual creatures. It's not about one person. It's about an institution and doing what's right for the institution, and the institution of education is about what's doing right for kids. I believe, as was said earlier, this is about the community standing up and saying, "We do not want to be known for this type of behavior. We do not want to be thought of as endorsing this type of behavior." Behavior that takes the focus off of kids, the focus off of learning, behavior that requires you to devote significant resources to people like me. And while I love my job, what I do is not productive for the betterment of education. The more you have to use me, the more trouble you have, and that is not a positive. The district should be able to focus on things that are constructive to the betterment of education. And I'll take any questions anyone has.
Questions, Sandy?
Well, I'd make one comment that when you mentioned that there's a conflict of interest, that there are two of us that would have one, I just need to draw to your attention that I wasn't on the board. I didn't vote for the Dog Track, so I had no conflict of interest, even though I own a small portion of a commercial building in Hudson. I didn't vote for the Dog Track, so I'm going to clear that up.
I understand that, Ms. Gurkey. My points were aimed at if there was an amendment to the purchase agreement or any further action on the purchase agreement, that if one board member had a conflict, you would also have a conflict going forward. I understand you weren't on the board at that time.
Yeah, I didn't vote for it. And the open enrollment issue, I want to -- I just want to mention that I had a -- I talked to the DPI today because this has been a big issue, and I know that the position of the Hudson School District and the board is that we have to take open enrolled students or the state will come down on us. So, I checked to the statutes, and there isn't anything in the statutes that specifically spells that out or says anything quite that extreme. So, I called the Department of Public Instruction today, and this is what they told me. I posed the question to them regarding open enrollment, and the question was, "If you have space for open enrollment students in the second grade, but know you have no room in the fourth or higher grades, can a school district deny open enrollment at the second grade level?" According to a woman named Mary at the Department of Public Instruction, she said, "It is perfectly fine to use future projections in a cast-forward formula for denying open enrollment applications in a lower grade." The DPI stated that this provision is very commonly used in numerous districts to limit enrollment so schools refrain from becoming overloaded and overcrowded. The DPI stated that parents have the right to appeal these denials. And then, we already know from Nancy at a special board meeting that the denials in Hudson are fairly rare. I believe that at a previous meeting, she stated that there were four or five of them over a 10-year period and that not all of the appeals coming to Hudson were overturned by the state. So, I'm just trying to get both sides of this open enrollment out there. What you're saying does not jive with what the Department of Public Instruction said today, and the board can do what they want with open enrollment, but I'm just trying to get the -- some clarity.
Board Member Gurkey, I'm not sure who Mary is at the DPI. I don't know if she is a secretary or she's a clerk or who she is. I can tell you, though, that I have a written document from DPI that contains their frequently asked questions, and the written document from DPI clearly outlines its interpretation and states that document from DPI clearly outlines its interpretation and states that a school board must accept open enrollment students in all grade levels in which it has space, period, end quote.
You have that, you have a document from it?
I have that with me. I'd be happy to produce.
Can you provide me with it?
I will provide it to you after the meeting, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Similarly, I'd also note to you that in one of the very few cases that have been decided on this, decided on this issue, which is McMorro versus DPI, 617 Northwest Second, 247, the Wisconsin Court of Appeals specifically addressed and based its decision on a review of space available in the 11th grade, a particular grade level, not other grade levels that might be impacted. So, again, I respectfully disagree. I applaud you for, for doing your research, for trying to become knowledgeable about the matter. I respectfully disagree with your interpretation.
Okay, and I, I would respectfully disagree with you too, so I can, you can show me the paper, and maybe you can change my mind.
Mary?
Sandy, just a question. The example you gave was elementary to elementary, correct? Like in elementary?
That was the question I posed to them, yes.
Okay. Did you ask them about going into middle school from elementary? So, for example, we were considering a second grade student, and the reason we would give for not accepting them was the middle school was closed. Did, did you ask that particularly?
No.
Because that's a second decision that we get to make. I wonder how they would have responded to that one, because that was what the board was looking at in relationship to decisions, one of the decisions that we were making.
Well, I could call them back and ask them that, but I think he's going to give me the paper that's probably going to clear it up for me.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mick? Now I think we're.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Mick.
Thank you, Mick.
Okay, moving on, on the agenda, topics for action, policy 6137, English as a second language program eligibility and exit criteria. Cory?
Okay, thank you. On to the exciting topic of
School.
Program eligibility and exit criteria. This is a new policy being proposed tonight to ensure that our district practices regarding ESL or ELL program eligibility, and specifically our exit criteria for English Language Learners program, is consistent with the recent changes provided by DPI. So just real quick, the state statutes require all districts to identify students with limited English proficiency, and that includes providing them with a home language survey and also DPI-approved English proficiency test, or assessment, and that assessment is called the access assessment. And this just measures speaking, listening, reading, and writing skills in English. And these results, then, are compared to state's proficiency definitions. So the policy tonight aligns with the updated state guidelines for exiting the ESL program. And there's two ways to do that. There's an automatic exit criteria. If a student now scores lower, if the, the automatic exit is that the state has lowered the proficiency expectations from a level six to a level five on that assessment. That's a change. Now, districts still have the ability to manually decide differently, and basically, in essence, take different information available to them and decide that a better course of action should be taken with a student. So, our policy in detail lays through that decision-making process, as well as the type of information that is required to be considered. I'll just, again, mention, along with that, that students will no longer be considered for the program if they meet the proficiency of five or six, and that is our goal. Our goal is for kids to become English proficient and learn in English, and then not need the program. So that is our goal. However, when decisions are made to continue students in the program, the policy also requires participation by parents. It requires, in the policy, for us to provide and retain that evidence on file. And it also identifies the fact that when students are exited, they are monitored for two additional years, just to ensure they are successful without the services of the ESL or ELL program. So, that's, in a nutshell, what the details of that policy outline. And we haven't had a, a district policy that's been this consistent with the state requirement. So, could it, could it change down the line? Possibly. Maybe we tighten up procedurally this down the line if DPI makes some adjustments. But this is a new policy that really, across the district, at all the buildings, lays out the same criteria based on the DPI guidance. So I'll just kind of stop with that and entertain any questions you have.
Okay. Questions for Cory?
Mr. President, I'd like to propose a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to move to, to approve policy 6137, as stated by Cory.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Cory. Okay, 2012-13 school lunch prices. Tim?
You've got a memo from our child nutrition coordinator, Peggy Eller. It addresses some changes to federal law, and it's called the Federal Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, Section 205. It's a paid lunch equity rule. What is being required of districts that participate in the National School Lunch Program is that they bring adjustment to paid lunch prices, so that there isn't a perceived or a supplementation of fully paid, fully paid prices with lunch. So, in looking at what the rule's requiring us to do, it will require us to gradually increase prices equal to the federal reimbursement rate, which right now is 251 for the 2012-2013 school year. So, what is being proposed here is that an approximately a 5% average increase over last year. There was no price increase last year, so last year we did not increase lunch prices. This year, as a result, and there's some other rationale down at the bottom we'll go through, but because of, because of the federal act and, and some of the other rationale, it will require us to raise prices. The federally mandated increase, again, it's, it's the difference between the free and the paid federal reimbursement rate. We also have increased costs. We, we certainly keep our prices down, as evidenced if we look at the CISA region, for example, elementary lunch prices on average for the, this past year were at 191. So this proposed price increase for elementary would be $1.85. So, we're still six cents below, below average. If you look at high school pricing, that would move from 195 to 205. The average in the CISA is 216. So again, we'd be under that. We do have other costs that, that have occurred in our food service operation, but again, we strive to keep the costs as low as we can. But this, this act does require us to raise those prices, so you can see the proposed price increase and the current price increase listed there. So we would recommend that you move to approve this price increase.
Okay. Any questions of Tim, or any motion?
Mr. President.
Move to approve? Motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion?
Mr. President, could I just ask a question for Tim? And I get what you just said. My question is, going forward, are we going to see readjustments based on the federal guidelines or recommendations? So, will we be expecting ongoing increases based on what they're?
Yeah, if we, if we look towards the future, if, if the law remains as is, I'm saying, you know, there's certainly changes that happen. But if we look at it the way it is today, we probably would look at, you know, if we'd need to bring that price up. And again, we'll look at ways to minimize that impact to students and their families. But we will be, as that act stands today, we'll be required to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Have we, we haven't been subsidizing or using the government money to subsidize the others, have we?
What's done is the, the federal government has looked at this. They're not saying, "School district, you're guilty of subsidizing." What they've done is they looked on a national level at, at pricing and equity in pricing, and, and they've made the determination that if your price doesn't fall within the 250, the 251 level at this point, because that's what the reimbursement rate is currently, they're making the determination that there is a subsidization going on. So, but this is something, again, not solely here in Hudson, but is across the board. Many districts are going to have to make this adjustment.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this price increase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. District Goals, 2012-13. Mary?
Mr. President, there are three goals that we are recommending to the board for the coming year, or this current year. And we brought these to Learning and Program Development, and they endorsed the goals. With three goals, it seems like, well, there may not be very much work here, but there is a significant amount of work behind the three goals that we're asking you to, to take action on this evening. We're not going to spend a lot of time on them, because in time, I think most of you know a bit about them. Certainly, High School Learning for the Future, you've already taken action to support that goal. So, for next year. So we'll move on to the next one unless you have questions about that. Progress towards a long-term solution for grades six through 12, space for learning needs. And we are on the move, certainly, to move that forward. We were looking at moving the rezoning decision forward, and then moving on to closing on the property. To the community engagement process, we have promised our community. And then, to talk about the configuration on the site and what would actually be on the site. So we're hoping to move that forward, and based on the successful April referendum, we hope to gain the next step, which is the rezoning. So, the next part is really a new goal for us, and it's HSD 2025 implementation. And I want to reiterate how we're seeing this goal, because as it starts out, plan to integrate to the full extent possible the district's strategic vision. And so, this is about state mandates and federal mandates, and carrying them out in the district. And it's not about creating a plan for those mandates. It's about creating a plan for a vision and doing it, implementing the mandates with our vision as the lead. And we want to be very, very purposeful about that. That will be very difficult work, because the mandates that we are facing are very significant. And so we do want to spend a little bit of time on this last one, just to give you a flavor for that. Many of the mandates come out of the ESEA or Elementary and Secondary Education waiver that the state sent to the, to the federal government, which has just been approved. And there are three principles behind that waiver from the state. College and Career, Ready Expectations for All Students, and certainly, we are, HSD 2025 speaks to that. The second one is State Developed Differentiated Recognition and Accountability and Support. This will be a very major initiative in the district with all the pieces to that. And then third, Supporting Effective Instruction and Leadership, and again, a very large area that will mean a lot of change in not only the Hudson District, but in other districts as well. So we're going to go on and talk a little bit about a few of these mandates, and there are more than we have listed here encompassed in that waiver. We're just going to highlight some of them, and Sandy's going to start us off with a few statements about the Common Core standards and some of the things that will be implement, or impacted. All right. We have mentioned in the past that there are new Common Core state standards in English, English Language Arts and Mathematics. There are 47 states that have adopted the Common Core standards, and they must be implemented, put into our curriculum by 2014-15. In addition to English Language Arts and Math, they also have included literacy standards for social studies, science, and our technical subjects. And again, we're currently working with those areas to look at the literacy standards, reading and writing standards for those subject areas as well. The standards have grade level standards for grades K through eight, and they also then have bandit standards for grades nine through 10, and 11 and 12. In addition, the English Language Arts and the Mathematics include what we refer to as either 21st century or college career readiness standards. For example, the English Language Arts includes college career readiness standards. A few of them would be things like reading closely to make logical inferences, analyzing how ideas are developed, evaluating content presented in diverse formats. So again, just to give you an idea of the kinds of things, the professional learning that will need to be working with our staff to meet those kinds of, of standards. Mathematics also includes what they refer to as mathematical practices, which again encompass 21st century skills, such as perseverance, reasoning, problem-solving, and communication. Currently, we only expect to see what is referred to as Common Core standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics, but there are other disciplines also working to develop new state and national standards, one of those being in the area of science. They are referred to as the Next Generation Science Standards. The first draft is currently out and being reviewed and is available on websites for comment. And the second draft, we're expecting to be available in the fall of 2012, so we can begin working with those. Social Studies, Wisconsin is currently in discussion, in discussion with several states to create common standards for social studies in collaboration with the National Council for Social Studies. Now, they're a little bit further behind. We don't anticipate for at least a year or two to see even the first draft of those standards. But again, we are working currently with our staff on looking at the national standards and using that as a guidepost at this current time. Other disciplines, such as world language, family and consumer science, other technical areas, Wisconsin DPI is working on revisions of our current state standards, as well as, there's a website out there with a plethora of resources on literacy for all subject areas. So that gives you just a little general sense of what's behind Common Core. The, just one comment on the Common Core standards. We have implemented standards for some time now. Sandy's department and our principals and our teachers have been very good at that. This is very different from what we've done in the past, and it has great potential for our students to learn at higher levels. But again, we have to look at this differently. It's not just about content in these areas. It's about process, and almost more important than the content itself. Lots of skills, lots of focus on skills. Read to Lead? The next area, Read to Lead Initiative, this is actually, came out of the Governor Scott Walker's initiative, which is a goal to have every child in the state of Wisconsin reading by the end of third grade. Great goal. The recommendations include implementing literacy screening for all kindergarten students in the state of Wisconsin, and this begins now in October 2012. They had a committee which selected the PALS Assessment, which is the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening. And Ann Mitchell has been working with a team of kindergarten teachers to prepare. They'll be training coming in August and/or September. All teachers must be trained by early October, and then the first assessment takes place in October as well. And then we'll be coming back at the end of the year to conduct another assessment to look again for growth. And obviously, we're looking for our struggling readers earlier on in kindergarten, based on those assessments and what we can do to intervene at that time. Other improvements with Read to Lead include implementing improvements to teacher prep programs around early reading, and including more rigorous exams for reading educators. They're going to revise the Wisconsin model, early learning standards. And then part of this also falls into the accountability that Mary mentioned, through the educator effectiveness requirements. You'll see a link between that and the reading requirements. So in this area, our SMART goals have led the way, and we've been very effective, and there'll be a report next month to you about the elementary reading SMART goal and the success of that for this last year. But this initiative, coming from the state, will require a lot of time and paperwork and things that, and regulation and new assessments that may not really increase reading among our students, but we're required to do. So hopefully, there'll be some benefit as well. Cory, you going to do response to intervention?
I would love to. So, response to intervention, many of you've heard a lot about, and the next step for this is now using that model to identify students who are eligible as a student with a specific learning disability. For years- a student with a specific learning disability. For years, the model's been, you take an IQ score, and compare that against a standardized achievement test, and if there's a big enough gap, they're eligible. It's a wait-to-fail model. It usually takes many years till they meet that requirement. The new model basically eliminates any cognitive assessment, and is really based on intensive research-based interventions. It requires two of those over a specific period of time, measured very discreetly, with specific standards determining rate of progress. And if you meet those specific standards, then you, the team can now determine that you've met the eligibility requirement. So, there's lots of technical requirements to go along with that, but that's in a nutshell. And it's a very big shift, and we're one of the leading states in the country to make this complete shift away from the old model.
All right. Sandy, come back on state assessment changes.
All right. Linked with the Common Core, proficiency on the Common Core will be measured with new assessments. Wisconsin is part of the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, and that consortium will develop the new assessments that will replace our current WKCE. The tests will be field-tested in 2013-14, and then fully in place in 2014-15. Can you see a running theme here, 2014-15? The new assessments will move from fall. Our current assessments take place in the fall, they'll move to the spring, and the tests will continue to be given in reading and mathematics in grades three through eight. The high school test will be moving from grade 10 to grade 11. The proficiency levels will be benchmarked against national and international standards. Another significant change is that the cell size used for accountability calculations will go from 40 students to 20. So, this is looking into regards to some of those subgroups, such as ELL, students with disabilities, or economically disadvantaged. We'll have just the 20 students. As a transition, already now this summer and fall, we will see cut scores for our current WKCE, based on the more rigorous NAEP scale. And NAEP stands for, again, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. We had anticipated getting that first draft in June, and now it's already been pushed out to more like September. So, there'll be a little transition time for us as we go to the new standards. The new assessments, again, are going to be very different from the WKCE. To be completely honest, our WKCEs are pretty much a very low-level assessment, very little information there for us to use. The new assessments will be a computer-adapted assessment, that'll be one piece. There'll also be some formative assessments, some interim assessments throughout the year to know how students are doing, progressing, preparing for that end-of-year assessment. And one of the larger pieces will be, there will be a performance task type of assessment that is also included. So, that becomes a major shift, as we again, continue to work and prepare for the new standards and the new assessments.
School report cards is something that is going to happen before 2014. In fact, it's going to happen this fall. And I just talked to DPI today, and they said we'll be getting materials in the next week. So, we don't know what that looks like yet. We've seen some templates, but this is an accountability measure that the state is putting in place. It will be online for anyone in the public, or the school district, to use the information about each individual school within the state of Wisconsin, public school. And schools will be rated and receive a numerical score in the areas of student achievement, math and reading, student growth, again, reading and math, closing gaps, reading, math, and graduation rate, on-track and post-secondary readiness, and then accountability expectations. So, that's test preparation, group rate, absentee, dropout rate, and so forth. There will be, each, each school will again receive this score, this numerical score, and they will also be rated in a category. There are five categories, and the categories are significantly exceeds expectations, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, meets few expectations, and fails to meet expectations. So, certainly something very different for us to anticipate and work through as kind of a dashboard about the school district, based on how the state is looking at each of the schools. There is, this replaces annual yearly progress, or AYP, that we've talked about before, and the, oh, the negative things that can happen to a district based on not meeting AYP. So, this is more about a school, but there will be some level of recognition at the state level for schools that are exceeding, and then, there also are requirements for schools that are not making expectations. So, again, another accountability measure, and this will start this fall, as we understand. You can see that all of these things are coming very quickly to us, even if we look at 2014. The last one is educator effectiveness, and this is in regard, this is an evaluation system, a state evaluation system, for both teachers and principals that's being put in place. So, it will in some way or other replace our current system, and we talked about it, we've had some information about it, Dave Grambo shared information. It's 50% on, for teachers, practice, and 50% on student achievement. And it will be in place in 2014-2015. This is a very huge shift for an evaluation system, and again, you know, we want to help, no, we want to make purposeful decisions as we move towards this evaluation system, to make sure it reinforces the work that we're doing in the district, just as our current evaluation system has done, and hopefully, we can even do it more. So, as we look forward to the system, this coming year, we have two pilots in place that we are going to be looking at a state model, and helping to give feedback into the state model in one way, and we're also looking at a model that's coming out of CISA VI for teacher evaluation, and we're going to be evaluating that as well, and making decisions whether this is going to meet our needs, and is the best model for us to use. So, we're starting that work right now. Our administrative leadership team will be looking at all of these initiatives this summer, and starting to develop our plan further to integrate them as well. So, I'd ask, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have, Sandy and Corey. Certainly, we'll chime in as well, and then, we ask for your action on these district goals.
Any questions? Okay.
One comment is, we reviewed these, and the Learning and Program Development Committee got unanimous support. There's, and I have one comment on that, but I'll wait for the committee reports.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
Move to approve?
Motion by Brian, second by Dan. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of District Goals 2012-13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for your good work in this. All right, our final action item is a 2012-13 additional staffing recommendations, Nancy.
The material in your board packet recommends additional, an additional five positions, two of which would be full-time, and three part-time. You heard tonight, Mr. Erickson talk about the preliminary budget, and because of some unanticipated additional aid, we were able to consider, consider some necessary positions. We did bring together on Monday morning, today's Tuesday, yesterday Monday morning, we brought together all of the principals that were available, and the district administrators, and we engaged in a collaborative priority process, based on growth, prioritizing, valuing higher classroom-based positions versus learning support, and also considering district initiatives, and certainly, some of which were just discussed. That night, last night, the Personnel Committee considered these positions, and recommended them as well. They include a teacher, part-time teacher math high school, part-time teacher family and consumer science high school. Those are both growth, to lower the class sizes in both of those department areas. Instructional coach, TOSA is teacher on special assignment for the high school. There is no similar position there now. School psychologist, part-time, Willow River, to establish some equitable level of service, and in consideration of the RTI, and the special education programs, and other regular education initiatives that school psychologists are involved with. Finally, the addition of another instructional coach at the elementary level. Again, a teacher on special assignment. There are two there now. This would be a third. We are, the cost would be $187,000. You can see that, and that is salary and benefits. A notation is that a year ago, the Board did approve a two-year plan to staff the high school, and this year, we were scheduled to put in place a math-science teacher. And, and we are able to do that with a reallocation of a vacant middle school teacher position. So, it's a notation rather than on the list, because it's a replacement. The cost is a reallocation. Mary, do you want to add anything, or Tim, financially?
I just want to reiterate the comments that Nancy had about the number of positions that were brought forward. There were 22 very worthy positions.
Long list.
And we have, as you know, been very limited to add positions to support the work in the district, and support our students and our staff work to raise student achievement. So, we have many other positions of worth that we would have liked to be able to fund, but with limitations in the budget. These are the ones that we believe are at the highest priority. And as we've talked about, you know, students come first, but it's also about staff as well. And I just go back to that teacher-family and consumer science, that is also about teacher load and reducing teacher load.
Okay. Any discussion or questions about, about this item, about staffing recommendations? I'll just note that the, as Nancy said, the Personnel Committee met last night and reviewed this. I was there in proxy to Mark, and we bring forth our recommendation as a committee to this, so.
Mr. President, I would move approval of the 2012-13 additional staffing recommendations.
Motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion for 2012-13 additional staffing recommendations, as outlined by Sweet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So, we move to the consent agenda items, which we'll take action on collectively, with language specifically around expenditures. Somebody could...
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent items, including expenditures, authorization to pay expenditures in the amount of $2,46,444.05.
Second.
Motion by Dan, and second by Lynn. All in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. We've moved now to the committee reports. Learning and Program Development Committee, Brian?
Thanks, Mr. President. We met yesterday. How were you doing? We met June 25th. It's been a long day. So, we met June 25th on Monday, covered a few items that, so, the ones that we haven't talked about yet, the peer helper data. Probably many of you know that we have a peer helper program. It's a great program where upperclassmen help, help other classmates with things that they may not want to talk to an adult about, you know, it just helps the whole relationship, and it's been, it's been a great program. So, I'd just like to inform all of you that it's a strong program, that there's a 60% increase in cases, so that, I don't think there's more cases, I just think there's more people talking about it. And it's, it's got really strong reviews from the peer helpers, that they, it's something that they really enjoy doing, and they feel like it's, you know, adding value in their high school career. And so, Corey gave a briefing on that, and it was, it was a real positive program that we're doing in our high school. Any questions on the program?
Questions for Brian?
On that one? Let me just, I'll just run through it. And then, English as a second language is already covered. Student medication, we also revised the student medication to make it kind of congruent with new state standards. Just let you know that this is, we provide over 17,000 doses of meds per year. It's, you know, it's a lot of responsibility, and we have a great, we have a great nursing program in our, in our schools, and it's, that's an incredible amount of responsibility, and they do a great job, and they've made some changes, I think are changes in the right direction, in terms of over-the-counter and things like that. Still very stringent on, on prescription meds, and how you get to get into school, and also now, children who need Epipen, who have been certified to use one, can carry one with them. So, that's a change, so. And then, finally, we cover the district goals. The one thing I would submit to all of you for maybe potential future actions, none of us like additional board meetings, but this, with all those changes in terms of how schools are going to be assessed, and the different assessment criteria, it may be prudent for us to kind of regather on a special session to talk about how, you know, what does that mean to us? How can we take these opportunities and actually move our district forward, and, and help also educate the community in terms of the assessments, how we look. Things are going to be different now with these new assessments. So, I would suggest you, it may be worth a, a special session of the Board.
Good comment. I think we'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other questions of Brian? Okay. Moving on to Finance Committee, Dan?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee had two meetings on July 9th and June 25th, much of which we've already covered through Tim's budget, preliminary budget discussion. But going back to June 25th, there are a couple other items we covered. We talked about sort of the financing for purchase of St. Croix Meadows, and most of the discussion revolved around, you know, where are we at with current bond rates, and they appear to be holding steady, and within the parameters that were established for us to maintain. And then, we talked about the merging of account funds 80 and 81, having to do with school-age care and community ed. And I think that, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the impetus behind this change was, we wanted to be in line with the DPI requirements and recommendations. It also is a, is a way for us to streamline our accounting methods, and also be consistent with sort of the auditor standards. Is that correct?
Well, the, the, the two funds are reported separately now, and that's okay. But DPI only recognizes one fund for those purposes, so this is a way to really streamline our process a little bit more, reduce by one fund what we have, still getting the same financial information that we get now.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Tim to answer?
Questions or Dan? Okay. Thank you, Dan. Going to take the last two. Facilities and Grounds Committee met on June 26th, and we had five, five agenda items to cover. When this building was built, we purposely strategically held funds for potential modifications that might be needed, based on the needs of, of the facilities here that weren't, may, may not have been anticipated. And so, coming to that point, there's about $67,000 approximately in funds that we're looking at, and what to do with that, we're considering, and it can only be used for this building, nothing else, and as well, can be used for debt service against, or could be used, or do you want to speak to this a bit, Tim?
Sure, sure. Yeah, the, the funds were held due to some erosion issues that we had, and we needed to hold those funds for a period of time, and measure what was happening to our erosion correction measures out here at Rivercrest. It appears that now we've, we've solved those problems, and so, that's the result. We've got the $67,000. It can... It can go back as a form of tax relief, or it can be spent exclusively here at Rivercrest because the bonding, the bond issue was for Rivercrest.
And so what the committee did was we took, we took action to request that Tim come back with some, some estimates and cost benefit analysis to make our decisions, please. So, okay. All right, second item was we, in anticipation of the potential of this rezoning, we have looked at, you know, hiring an architect consultant. We've, in the process of that, we've identified criteria and worked with staff on that criteria. We're not authorizing the hiring of this position. We're, we're preparing for the potential and want to be prepared to move if the rezoning passes. And so that, that criteria was finalized, and we're moving down the road. Review, we also reviewed the request for proposal for high school plant assessment. Couple of things about this in, in that we need to do an evaluation of the high school for two reasons. One is the building's aging, and we need to make sure that we're looking at what potentially items that we need to, to address on a capital, on a capital manner in that building so that we can look at potential cost efficiencies and so forth and make sure that we've got a safe and effective and efficient building. Secondly, if the rezoning passes in a subsequent referendum down the road, we're looking at potential changes to that building as well. So this, this effort is to, in an attempt to try to prepare ourselves for those, for both, for both issues or either issue. And so that it's, it's a necessary action for us. Update on preparation for St. Croix Meadows rezoning request. We're continuing to do the work. It's, it's trying to determine costs from a variety of different entities, including the city, the county, and it's fairly laborious and it's challenging. But we believe that we're, will be prepared for August or September for presentation and, to the city at their request. Summer projects were reviewed. We, good news is that we've completed now the four remaining secure entrances. And that would be the high school, Willow River, the middle school, and what was the fourth one?
It would be the, the high school, Willow River, Holton, and North Hudson are the four remaining sites.
Thanks. So that was, this is an effort or project that would date back to a year or two, I think, and maybe more than that. And so, so our intention was to try to provide a secure, safe entrance for our schools. And then there were some lighter projects as well that were outlined, but nothing of much significance. The, the entrances, the final entrances, the secure entrances came to a total cost of about 200 to 200, or will come to about $2,000 to $250,000, so. All right. Questions? All right, the final one is an easy one because we only had one agenda item on our Personnel Committee meeting, and that was covered tonight. So I want, oh, Mark. Sorry, Mark.
No, that's, all right. There were, there were two, two sessions. And first, my thanks for you filling in so admirably on session two last night. Session one, conducted two weeks ago, which I served as chair. Nancy Sweet provided us with the staffing update. The enrollment information wasn't ready at that time. She promised to be ready by the July board meeting, and of course, it was. We received, as I said, our staffing update. Number of positions posted, interviews are in the process of being conducted, some are completed. At that time, four positions had been filled. The Personnel Committee endorsed the hiring of a part-time head lifeguard and pool monitor. This will be up for, up to 18 hours a week. And also, the endorsed the continued employment of, we hired two additional high school campus monitors in the spring, following some increase in disciplinary incidents. So we endorsed continuing them for the additional, going forward to the next school year. And finally, we, there was a final notice of support staff member reductions. There were two ed assistants that received their final notice.
Thank you. Any questions of Mark?
Mr. President?
Oh, Brian, yep.
Move to adjourn?
Aren't you gonna let me give my, no. Second, a motion to adjourn from Brian, and second from Dan. All in, I guess we'll do a little call vote, huh? No, no, we don't need that. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Good night.